We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at six o'clock. And as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the commission, please fill out a blue speaker form and give it to our clerk, Mrs. Cooper. Right, see, I got it this time. I got this, Mrs. Cooper, the clerk. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea will be marked absent. Chair Feng?
Here.
And tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Charleston.
Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. If you'd like to speak on behalf of the commission on any items that's not on the agenda, you can please again fill out a blue speaker form. However, the commission cannot address or take any actions that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there any public comment cards, Mrs. Cooper?
No, we have not received any.
All right, moving on. Number four on the agenda, any additions or revisions by staff or members of the commission to the agenda?
The staff has none, sir.
Commissioners?
None.
Okay. We're speeding along here, okay. Consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved with one motion unless a member of the commission, staff, or a member of the audience would like to request a specific item be removed. Staff member, any changes?
No, sir.
Member of the public, nothing?
No, we have not received any requests.
Commissioners? Okay. And can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Now on to agenda item six, presentations. Item 6.1 would be a presentation by the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. Mr. Norris?
Yeah, Chairman, members of the commission, at a recent staff meeting, the staff from the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission came and gave us this basic presentation. And we were so interested in and thought it was so good that we wanted to have them come and speak to you. And I think tonight is very timely, given that our first project that we'll get to after the presentations is actually something that has been to the ALUC for review and you'll see conditions affecting the design of that project. So I will turn it over to the ALUC staff. But again, we thought it was something very interesting and timely and hope you'll enjoy the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, my name is Simon Hausman. I'm the Director of the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. This evening I have with me Mr. Paul Rule, one of our principal planners. And this is who we are and why we are around. Does anyone need me to read the slides? Okay. Then all you have to figure out is that we're kind of unusual. And we're there because there's a specific statute that has calls for an airport land use commission. It's generally done at the county level. And this is why. Back in 1972, an F-86 overran a runway at Executive Airport in Sacramento and killed 22 people, including 12 children.
Sorry to interrupt, but we have Vice Chair Oblea joining us.
That's quite all right. Good evening, sir.
Can I mark Vice Chair Oblea as present today?
To briefly recap, my name's Simon Hausman. I'm with the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. Mr. Paul Rule is one of our principal planners. We're talking about why there is a Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. And this is why. An airplane ran off the end of a runway and killed 22 people. At that moment, the legislature of the state of California decided that it was important to pay attention to what we built at the end of runways. Avoid building schools, hospitals, things of that sort. And that led to an evolution into general land use planning around airports in order to make people... The purpose, simply stated, is to protect people from airports and airports from people. An airport is an industrial use. If it were a concrete plant, it would have a 300-foot chimney, blow sand and smoke all over the neighborhood, and everyone would know it was there. But airports are flat. And airplanes aren't moving all the time. It's an intermittent activity. So people can buy a house, build a building, and not realize until after they moved in that there's an airport nearby. As I said, this is the Public Utilities Code. Every airport has a plan. It's based on the master plan of the airport. The airport owner and operator develops their master plan, where the runways are, where the buildings are, where the overrun zones are. The Airport Land Use Commission then develops the Airport Land Compatibility Plan, which has to do with what's built around the outside of the airport. We do not have any control or influence over what happens in the airport itself. That's entirely separate activity. And then we have the general plans, specific plans, things of that sort, which you develop and your community develops, which then get reviewed by the Airport Land Use Plan Commission to see if they're consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. In the case of Eastvale, your general plan is in fact consistent with the Chino Airport Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which means most of the matters that would otherwise come to the commission get handled by your city. And the small part of your city that is within the airport influence area of Corona, then your plan is not consistent with Corona. So those matters would come to the Airport Land Use Commission, but that project area is almost entirely built out. And the Airport Land Use Commission has nothing to do with existing development. It's entirely a planning process for future activity, future development. And this will give you an idea of where we are. There are actually 13 airports involved with the ALUC, 12 of them in the county, one of them being Chino, which is outside the county. But we have an airport land use plan for that airport. And this goes back to 2004, all public use airports. And now we're going to get into some more of the specific details, for which I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rule.
Thank you, Simon. Again, my name is Paul Rule. Good evening, commission. ALUC staff, principal planner. Going through the more specific details about your Chino Compatibility Plan, which is what you see right in front of you. The portion of the city of Eastvale is located within Zones E, D, C, and B1. The remaining jurisdictions that are located within the Chino Compatibility Plan are located in San Bernardino County. Those are the cities of Ontario, Chino Hills, and unincorporated San Bernardino County. As Simon already mentioned, there is a small sliver of the city of Eastvale, and you can just be able to see it. It's a triangular tip on the northerly portion where the Zone E and the letter E is. That portion of the city of Eastvale is actually, intercedes with the Corona Compatibility Plan, in which, as Simon mentioned before, the city's general plan is not consistent or has not yet been found consistent with the Corona Compatibility Plan. So what is ALUC and what's our role? We generally like to see ourselves as an independent body. We are an advisory and referral agency working with the local jurisdiction. So we are here to recommend a certain recommendation to a local jurisdiction on whether or not a project is consistent or inconsistent with our airport land use compatibility plan. We do not approve projects. We do not deal with any entitlement. We do not permit projects. And we have no enforcement capabilities. We rely on the local jurisdictions to do those things. Again, what we are not, we are not the airport owner or operator. We have no direct impacts on the airport operations themselves, no authority over flight paths and frequencies, and not a final approval body that again resides with the local jurisdiction. And again, no authority over projects that are located actually on the airport. Projects within an airport influence area that always require ALUC review, regardless of a local jurisdiction general plan consistency with the airport land use compatibility plans, include general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, change of zones, and adoptions of modifications or of public use airport master plans. For liability reasons, ALUC will not review or make determinations on projects that have already received a final action at the local jurisdiction level. Additional projects that are within the AIA that require review, where a local jurisdiction general plan has not yet been found consistent, are the following planning entitlements, like plot plans and CUPs, subdivision maps, parcel maps and track maps, and any project that could be considered a hazard to flight. Think solar panels. Jurisdictions whose general plans have been found consistent, in this case, again, the city of Eastvale, has been found consistent with the Chino Compatibility Plan, are responsible for conducting airport land use compatibility review for the projects in lieu of ALUC review. And as Simon mentioned, ALUC does not review existing uses. However, there's a small caveat that if an existing use would like to change and increase maybe its square footage or intensify its use, that existing use may no longer be an existing use and may be open for consideration for ALUC to review. And lastly, projects that are outside of the airport influence area that always require ALUC review are essentially very tall structures, anything greater than a height of 200 feet. Think wind turbines or very tall antennas. Also, new or expanded airports or heliports would also be required by ALUC to be reviewed. So these are the six issues that ALUC will, does review on a full-time basis. They are part of the compatibility table that you have there. It's broken down into density and intensity, which is essentially the number of people created by a project. The provision of open area for mitigating or for the provisions of safety issues of a plane if there was an emergency landing needed to touchdown, that open area would be provided. There are lists of discouraged and prohibited uses depending on what zone you're located. We look at building and structure height. We look at noise in relation to aircraft noise and impacts from them, and other hazards to flight. So very quickly going through the first part of the review, which is the number of people. We at ALUC look at residential density as anything along the lines of single-family residential and apartment units. And they are calculated by dwelling units per acre. For projects that are non-residential intensity, which are commercial industrial types of projects, the occupancy is calculated by the state building code based on the floor use of those buildings. And those intensity calculations are done by an average acre intensity and a single acre intensity. Again, the purpose of this particular issue is to limit the number of people nearby in the event of an aircraft accident. You can just think of the original slide that we showed today about the Farrell Ice Cream Parlor. The provision of open area. Projects that are 10 acres or greater shall provide a certain percentage based on the compatibility zone of open area within the project boundary. These open areas shall be at least 75 feet in width and 300 feet in length. Just think of a landing strip. And shall be kept obstacle and obstruction free. No objects greater than four feet in height with a diameter of four inches or greater. Again, the intent is to provide areas that pilots could use in the event of an emergency landing. There are listed in the table a list of prohibited and discouraged uses. As you get closer to Zone A, the list of uses increase. Just think of any type of sensitive type of use, like a school or hospitals where you have to deal with the infirmed or very young children. Very difficult to evacuate if an event occurs. Churches and other assembly-type uses are generally prohibited as you get closer to the inner zones because just of the sheer number of people that those create. There are other concerns like bulk storage hazardous materials and highly noise-sensitive outdoor non-residential uses. And as a note, hazards to flight is actually a prohibited use for all the zones. But I have a slide that I will get into a little bit later to discuss that. And as a note, Zone A prohibits all structures except those that serve an aeronautical function and prohibits assemblages of people and hazardous materials. For the purposes of Chino Compatibility Plan in the city of Eastville, there are no Zone A portions that are located within the city limits. So one of the issues that we look at is related to the height of a proposed building and structure. We often get the question from the public of, you know, what is ALUC's height restriction so that we know how tall a building, the building height? Unlike the planning department, where there's a flat threshold for building height, ALUC actually does not have a standard that we give to the public. Instead, we rely on the FAA obstacle obstruction threshold, which is calculated based on the distance from the project site to the runway and the difference in site elevation. If a project's below that threshold, no FAA review is required. ALUC is satisfied. If the project does exceed that threshold, then the project must be sent to the FAA for review to determine the potential impact on navigable airspace. Once the review's been completed, the FAA will make its determination. And that's just the exhibits for the imaginary surfaces. Noise is one of the issues that we also look at. The purpose of the noise compatibility policies is to avoid the establishment of noise-sensitive land uses in airport environments that are exposed to significant levels of aircraft noise. The location of the CNEL contours is used to define the compatibility zone boundaries and criteria. The contours are determined by aircraft operations, i.e. the type and flight path. Noise exposure limitations are provided in Table 2B, which is on the next slide, which shows you the acceptability of a project relative to noise impacts. ALUC's maximum acceptable aircraft-related interior noise level is 45 dB CNEL for habitable rooms. The airport zones are composite zones, meaning that they consider both noise impacts and safety concerns. And that shows you the contours for the Chino Airport. As you can see, for the city of Eastvale, the boundary that the city goes into only extends into the 55 to 60 CNEL contour. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, each of the compatibility zones listed as a prohibited use would be consideration of anything that would be a hazard to flight. Such hazards to flight include attraction of birds leading to bird strikes. Think retention basins or any type of bodies of water that could potentially attract birds, which then could potentially create a bird strike incident with the aircraft. Recycling facilities as well. Anything organic or biological would be also a concern. Visibility impairment, anything relying solar panels, the glare created from solar panels might be a potential concern. That would have to be looked into. Electrical transmission lines and thermal plumes would be a concern. And then any other use that would be an impact to aircraft safety would be considered a hazard to flight. With that, the wraps up our presentation from ALUC. The slide that I show you here at the end of the presentation just indicates a more recent aircraft disaster in San Diego where several homes were damaged. And I believe there were lives lost in this particular incident. And I don't mean to show this slide to you to scare cities, but mainly to encourage the jurisdictions to work with ALUC so that communities can be built more compatibility, more compatible with the airports that are located in your jurisdiction. That concludes my presentation. We're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Looks like Josh has one.
Quick question, just out of curiosity. In the past, I think there were some discussions about Ontario Airport and some of the influence areas surrounding Ontario Airport. Is there any impact to our county from the Ontario Airport?
So the jurisdiction of the Ontario Airport and the influence areas do not affect or go to the Riverside County jurisdiction levels. So generally, we do not respond to any projects that are located in those areas.
Does that kind of include the expansion of the airport or future, future expansions of the Ontario Airport?
Thank you. It's really very simple because we are a Riverside County commission. We have no authority or ability to go into Los Angeles County. If the expansion of the airport leads to a change in the noise contours and the operating patterns, which then start to have an impact in Riverside County, then we would do towards Ontario, as we have done with Chino, which is address that portion of the surrounding area which impacts the residents of Riverside County. So the answer is maybe. Any other questions? Thank you very much for giving us the time, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city of Eastvale.
Thank you. All right, on to public hearings. At this time, we'll be conducting two public hearing items. Again, if you'd like to speak before the commission on the agenda item, please fill out a blue speakers form and present it to our clerk, Mrs. Cooper. And I will call you up before the agenda matter, and you can speak. On to item 7.1. For project number PLN 18-20026, the Merge Retail and Industrial Park. Mr. Norris?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Ordinarily, Kanika Kitt would be giving this presentation. She's a little under the weather today, so I will take over for her. And before I start this presentation, I just wanted to note for the commission and the audience, we have two items on your agenda tonight. Both of them involve general plan amendments. And as the commission may know, and for the audience's information, the city council here adopted a number of years ago a policy that we consider those general plan amendments on a schedule every three months. Our next set of hearings on general plan amendments is December, and then after that, not until March. So we are hoping that we can conclude the business on these items tonight, or at least conclude a recommendation on the general plan portion so we can move that forward and keep on schedule and not have to delay these projects into next year. So I just wanted to preface both of the items with that discussion. So with that, I will give you a presentation on the Merge. So as often happens, we have what's fairly simple, and there's just a lot of paperwork to go along with it. The applicants for the Merge are seeking to build basically the product that's up on the screen here. It's a mix of retail and light industrial on a currently vacant parcel at the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald. And here, getting into the paperwork is all the entitlements. There is a general plan amendment. We'll get into more detail on all of these. A change of zone to apply two different zones to the project. There is the major development review, which is the portion of this project where you look at the design of the project, the buildings, the landscaping, et cetera. There is a variance, and that comes directly from some requirements that the ALUC has imposed on the project that limit landscaping and other tall things on portions of the project. And then there's a tentative parcel map to divide the parcel into different pieces. In addition, there are four conditional use permits. Two of those involve the sale of alcohol in two different places on the site. One is a proposed grocery store. The other is a gas station convenience store. And there are two proposed drive-throughs in this project. One is a drugstore drive-up window. The other is a coffee shop. And we'll go into a little bit on those. Both of those drive-through uses require conditional use permits. So here is our site. As I mentioned, at the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald. The northern boundary of this project is basically the city limits. So go north of the project here into the city of Ontario. To the east of it is the currently under development Sndero Residential Project. So the NARS homes that are going up there are directly east of this project. To the west is the existing Dyte Dairy, which is still in operation. One of only two left in Eastville. And south of it is the approved, but not yet built Walmart Supercenter project. So we wanted to note at a previous planning commission meeting at which a different action associated with this property was on the agenda. We had a number of folks from Ontario who live in that neighborhood north of the project come here and speak to the commission. I spoke with them after the meeting, said we'd love to go out and talk with them. So we did that. Kanika Kitt and I met with them at their house overlooking the project and heard from them about their concerns. These are all addressed in the staff report, but we just wanted to note that we did have a very productive meeting out there. Hopefully, gave them some information on the project. Definitely heard their concerns. And some of the recommendations that are in your staff report tonight really came right out of that meeting. So it was very productive. So let's start kind of at the top with the general plan amendment. Currently, the site is designated all... I wish we had a pointer that worked on here. The entire site is currently designated for light industrial development on our general plan. What this particular application involves is changing the southern portion of that to retail. And you see, there's not a straight line. That kind of jog in it corresponds to the boundaries of the retail area that they're proposing in their plan. So that's why that jog is in there. That same question came up about the parcel map that we had at the last meeting. That's why the jog is there. We feel it's an appropriate general plan amendment. We've been dealing with a number of potential developers of this property over several years. And we have, at a staff level, consistently pressed them to include some retail here. Basically, you're at the intersection of two major streets, a large growing market just to the north of us in Ontario. We felt it was appropriate and something we should take advantage of to put retail revenue generating uses there, as well as providing additional retail opportunities for people in Eastville and that part of town and as well as up in the city of Ontario. As noted up here, and this is all, again, in your staff report in a little more detail, it increases shopping opportunities. It increases the amount of commercial retail land in Eastville, which we don't have as much of probably as we should. And it promotes a number of policies in the general plan that encourage the development of this type of use. The change of zone. If you're on board with the general plan amendment, the change of zone is very simple. It just replaces the existing agricultural zoning with zoning that matches the general plan designations. So it's the same boundary. You're just applying zoning rather than general plan. And then we get into airport compatibility. That, as I mentioned, was something that directly affected the design of part of the project. So this did go to the Airport Land Use Commission. And what you're seeing on here in the kind of green color are some areas, you know, as our friends from the ALUC mentioned. A project of this size is required to set aside areas for that kind of emergency landing. So that's what those green areas are. They're generally between buildings and along internal roadways. But when we get a little bit more into the presentation, what happens in those areas is we can't have anything taller than four feet. So light fixtures and then trees. And that's where we get to the variance discussion later on because we can't plant trees here. And that's where we get to the variance discussion later on, because we can't plant trees here. There's shading in parking areas that we require that can't be achieved, so that's what the variance comes from. We'll talk about that a little bit more. There are a number of conditions that the ALUC recommended, which are part of the conditions that we've presented to the commission tonight. And these are listed up here, we don't need to go through all of them. A number of them deal with the size of buildings. And getting back to that discussion about how many people are going to be together in one place, what the ALUC was trying to do was keep those numbers of people down below a certain level. So that's why you're seeing the Starbucks, that's a drive-through coffee shop, can't be larger than a certain size in their dining area, because over that size, you would probably have too many people on the ground at one time. So that's where these numbers come from. There are restrictions on certain uses. Notice of airport operations to future property owners, so whoever buys property here will know that there's an airport. Actually, if you just stand out there for about five minutes, you'll know that there's an airport, but we'll notify them in writing as well. In response to the fact that we can't plant trees in some portions of the project, we've required them to take trees that they would plant there and plant them elsewhere on the site. We applied the same condition to the Walmart project across the street. They had to request the same type of variance, so we imposed that same condition on them. And then in those ALUC open space areas where we can only plant shrubs, we've included a condition to plant them at a larger initial size, so we get the growth at least up to four feet faster than we normally would. So with the land use, the general plan, the zoning issues out of the way, then we get into the major development review. And please stop me if you have any questions as we go through this. So again, here's the overall site plan. Number of buildings, we'll get into those. This is an aerial view of what the project will look like. And what you'll notice on here, and again, I apologize, I can't point, but there are several areas here, and we'll go back to the site plan for a second, that are shown in that green color for future development. There's nothing proposed on those sites currently, so those will come back to the planning commission as a separate development plan review whenever they're ready to come forward. But these are the buildings that they're proposing. So you see in the back there, the larger light industrial buildings, and then the retail buildings along the Archibald and Limonite frontages. Down in the bottom corner here, we're showing their proposed entry monumentation with the name of the project on it. There's a minor condition in the staff report to make sure that there's something behind that sort of transparent sign to block the view of the Starbucks drive-through, which is right behind it. Here's a circulation plan. There's four intersections or four driveway entrances onto the site from Limonite and Archibald. The major ones are the larger circles, the secondary ones are the smaller circles. And we've identified on here what's basically the primary and then secondary internal access. There's going between those two signalized intersections is what we consider the major circulation through the project. That's where most of the retail clientele, we feel, is going to access the project. And then the green areas are secondary, which are mostly, again, internal to the retail once you've gotten off the street, and then serving the light industrial buildings behind. Part of the reason that we paid attention to which was primary was, as we were working with the applicant to design the buildings, we've worked with them to improve the appearance of the project as you're on that east-west primary drive. The building frontages have been improved. The loading dock on the grocery store, for instance, was moved so as you're driving through, you've got a more attractive view of that. So in terms of the major driveway access, there are a few conditions that we've requested of them, and again, these go back in large part to the ALUC conditions. If you look on the exhibit, you'll see that diagonal crosshatching. Those are the ALUC open space areas where we can't plant trees. So what we've tried to do there is, one of the areas that that affects is that entry off of Archibald, the driveway entry, where we normally would put trees as an entry statement. We can't put trees there. So we've proposed a condition to put enhanced landscaping with a monument sign on either side. So in place of that vertical tree element, we'll have some monument signs and shrubs and so on, up to four feet tall. And then on that entire spine road or that major access drive-through, in that ALUC area where we can't plant trees, we'd like shrubs in, again, a larger container size, so that we get that landscape appearance faster than we normally would. Because normally, you'd go in there with five gallons, maybe even smaller, but 15-gallon shrubs will get us larger landscaping right from the get-go. We've worked pretty hard, we think, with the applicant to provide a pedestrian network throughout here, which is highlighted here in blue, and we can talk more about that if you need to, but we do feel that both, you know, they and we have made a substantial effort to make sure that once you're in here, you can walk everywhere on a designated pedestrian So here are some of the buildings, and we've highlighted some of the ALUC conditions. So we'll start off with the major grocery store and what they call their Shops 1 building. These are the, some perspective views of it. The ALUC conditions up here, again, these are very similar to what we imposed on the Walmart across the street, risk reduction measures. So it's a concrete structure, so it's better armored in case an aircraft does happen to hit it. Fewer windows, no skylights on the top of it, a single story, and more exiting than would normally be required per the building code. So if a building strikes the building, there are more opportunities for people inside to get out. And then these are two other perspective views of that same building. And you can see on the left-hand side of the top picture and the right-hand side of the bottom, that's part of a plaza area located between these buildings and the buildings to the left or to the west of it. This is the drugstore building, so we're now just, we're going left and to the west of the grocery and the Shops A building. And again, in the picture on the top at the right-hand side, you see that plaza area between the two buildings. And then on the right-hand side, you see the back of the grocery store, and that is their proposed drive-up window, which I'm sure you're familiar with. We have those, I think, all of our grocery stores here in town. Shops 2, as they call it, is a multi-tenant building on the Limonite frontage, so keeping with the same architectural theme as the other buildings, but obviously on a smaller scale. And the ALUC condition affects this building that if there's a dining area, it can't exceed 500 square feet. And again, that just gets back to limiting the number of people on the ground in any particular time. Pad 1 is their Starbucks building, so again, keeping with the same architectural theme, same use of colors, materials, et cetera. And the ALUC condition affecting this building is that the dining area can't exceed 1,117 square feet. So that's something we will check in when their construction drawings come in. So we do have some conditions recommended for you that affect the Starbucks building. One is we'd like a, some kind of a screen between the outer edge of the drive-through lane and the, to screen the view of the cars in there. And then landscape screening between the outdoor seating area, which doesn't show very well on here. Well, if you look in the right-hand side of the top drawing, there's actually attached to the building, and then going further on, there is a fairly large outdoor seating area. Actually, it shows up very well in the bottom illustration here. But we'd like to see more screening between the cars, which are going around kind of the back of that outdoor seating area and where the people are sitting. This is the proposed gas station and convenience store, so it's currently proposed to be a Chevron. So you see some Chevron branding on there. And again, very similar architecture and so on to the rest of the center. And then we get into the industrial buildings. So starting at the west and then going east, these are buildings 1 and 2. We're still not satisfied with the back or the east side of these buildings, as highlighted down in the bottom illustration. So we've proposed a condition that they improve that elevation with more variety, more materials, articulation, et cetera. So that's one area that we're not particularly, not entirely pleased with, so we would like the opportunity to work with them more on that. Going east now, these are buildings 3 and 4. So these, we feel, are properly designed. And if you look here, so you see where the arrows are pointing for 2 and 3, those are views, so the middle and the lower photo, those are what you would see as you're driving through the project. So as I mentioned, we kept that in mind and worked with the applicant. So when you're a motorist, probably more than likely going to the retail center, you're driving by this, but it's not going to look like just a big blank industrial building. So we did try and pay attention to the architecture there. Industrial Building 5, the west elevation here, that's in illustration 3. Again, that's something that you're going to see as you're driving through. We're not entirely pleased with that, so we've recommended a condition to improve that west elevation, because again, that's something that you'll see on that spine road, and we want to make sure that the experience for the retail customers is as good as it can be. And then finally, industrial buildings 6 and 7. One thing I wanted to note, all of these buildings here, actually, there's one more, but these two buildings here, 6 and 7, and then the building to the south of them, have loading docks on the eastern side. What's not shown in these drawings, so in that bottom illustration here where that red box is, there's a requirement for a 10-foot-tall screen wall. So that's going to extend from the corner of that building out to enclose that other side of the loading dock. And that's to keep the noise from any operations in there contained within that loading area. That was imposed as a mitigation measure, and it's really due to the future homes which are being built just to the east of that. So these are a couple other views of those buildings. And again, so down here at the bottom, View 3, that doesn't show that 10-foot wall. So there would be a 10-foot wall coming off that corner of the building and extending here, basically parallel with where that truck is parked. There's also, and we'll get to this in a discussion about fences and walls, where that number 2 view is, at that very top northeastern corner, that loading dock faces to the north toward those homes in Ontario. So we, the applicant is proposing it, and we're concurring to put a masonry wall between that loading dock, along that northern boundary, between the loading dock and the homes on the other side. So this is building number 8, and the different views here. And then this is kind of going around the site. This is the eastern boundary, so we've shown here some sections just to compare sort of how things relate. This is the existing condition. There's actually a few more homes in the Lennar project that's in that top photo that have been built since we took this picture, but to give you an idea of how close they are to the property line. We proposed a condition here that they landscape with 24-inch box-sized trees, again, to get that landscaping up and established faster than we normally would. Down here at the bottom is a section that shows the relationship of those buildings. So if you look up at the top, upper right-hand corner in the site plan there, you'll see section CC, and that's what's being shown down here at the bottom of this slide. So it's about 75 feet from the edge of the homes to the edge of the light industrial buildings. Then at the northern boundary, and again, this is where we actually went out and met with the folks up in Ontario. You can see here the relationship of the two sites.
Could you go back to that one more?
Sure.
I just wanted to see the, the height of that wall, because it's eight feet on the Business Park side and it's six feet on the residence side?
It's actually a little bit taller on this side. If you go onto the other side, it only looks, it looks like a six-foot wall, but I think it looks to me a little taller than six feet on this side.
No, I know, it's eight or 10?
I think it's about eight feet on this side, yeah.
Eight feet?
Just a guess, but from being out there.
You just kind of glimpsed it, so.
Yeah. So up here in the upper left-hand corner, that's a photograph that shows basically the relationship between the two sites. So the city limit, I don't know, Joe might know exactly where, but somewhere in this channel configuration here is the city limit. So Eastville on the right-hand side, City of Ontario on the left, there is an existing pedestrian pathway on the Ontario side, and then the homes. And what you're seeing here right at the corner, the homes have a masonry wall where they back onto the channel. You get a little bit past that, and it turns into an open view fence, so the residents there do have a view directly from their backyards onto the site. And down here at the bottom, again, you see Sections AA and BB. Those are shown up in the top there, again, to give you an idea of the relationship between the two. So 160 or so feet from edge of home to edge of buildings. So I mentioned, the applicant has, in response to what we heard from the residents in Ontario and then working with them, the applicant is proposing this, which is a combination of masonry wall and tubular steel fencing. So this would all sit on the property line, and the masonry wall would be located basically where those internal roadways, so we can get a site plan here, where those internal roadways that go north and south intersect with that northern boundary road, you would put a masonry wall there, both for noise and as the vehicles are going north on that roadway to block their headlights from shining into those backyards. And then also up at that far northeastern corner, to block the noise and lights and so on from that loading dock on the building at the very northern corner. So this would be done, the wall itself would be done a little bit differently than we've done in the past. When we built the Cendaro project and conditioned them to provide a wall, they built a wall, and there's no landscaping on the other side of the wall. Folks over in Ontario didn't really like the way that looks, so we're proposing here is they would build this wall, plant vines on the Eastville side of it, put a little notch at the bottom of it to push the vines out, and then they'll grow up onto the Ontario side. It's commonly done, so you water them, maintain them from the Eastville side, but they'll grow up on the Ontario side, on the Eastville side as well. And again, we're also requiring them to put the trees in this area in 24-inch boxes rather than 15 gallons.
Would it be on the Eastville or the?
The trees would be on the Eastville side. So the wall and the fence would be right on the property line. All the landscaping now happens on the Eastville side. But we'll talk about one question that may come up in a minute about that. So again, here's the wall that we installed, required to be installed at the Cendaro project, and there's no landscaping here, so that's something we're trying to avoid in this situation. So on that northern boundary, if, for some reason, if the commission decided it was more appropriate to make that an unbroken masonry wall, there's a couple of ways you can do, deal with that. One is to, well, number two is basically what we're just talking about, put the wall right on the property line, do the vine thing, and leave all the landscaping on the Eastville side, other than the vines that'll grow up the other side. The other way would be to move the walls five feet into the project and put five feet of landscaping on the other side of it. Could possibly be done, the problem there is that then you need to get to it to access it. And they would need to get permission from JCSD, which owns that access road, to go out there with their trucks and maintenance vehicles and maintain the landscaping, just something to feel, just to consider if you want to go down that road. So going back into the projects, just kind of highlighting some of the outdoor amenities. You know, as we mentioned, we did work with the applicant to provide a really highly amenitized project, so there's, you know, some very nice outdoor areas. I mentioned the very large outdoor seating area at the Starbucks, which is down in the lower right-hand corner, and then that outdoor plaza area between the Shops buildings, which we think is going to be a really attractive place for people to gather. And then there's, in addition to these plaza areas, there are other landscape features that go along those pedestrian corridors that we think will make it a much more inviting place to walk through the parking lot. And that's up on the upper right-hand corner there, that's an illustration. So you can see the industrial building behind it, but then in between the buildings, an illustration of what they're proposing to do. And there is a condition in there that the developer is going to install all of the things that are shown in the pictures here. So we've run into that before where the pretty pictures don't quite match up, so there's a, basically a pretty picture condition in here that is going to look like this. Again, just going back really quickly on the airport influence area, there are conditions in there that come directly from the Airport Land Use Commission, the open space areas, they mentioned the solar panel issue, so that's a condition, the single-story buildings, and so on. The limitation on landscaping, as I mentioned, gets us to the variance issue, and that's again, in these green areas where we can't plant any trees. So our zoning code requires 50% shading. You can't do that if you can't plant trees or put shade structures, both of which are prohibited in those areas. So in order to do that, they require variance. We go into that in a little more detail in the staff report, but we do feel that the variance is justified, as it was for the Walmart store, which is basically in the same situation of not being able to develop if they had to meet the landscaping requirements. So. And then finally, and I promise I'm almost done, the tentative parcel map, this is fairly simple. This takes the two-lot map that this commission looked at a month or so ago and now divides it into 17 parcels, so those two now go into 17. And these basically correspond with the various buildings, users who want to control their own parking lots and so on. And as I mentioned, that kind of hump in the middle, again, just goes back to their proposed site plan. Conditional use permits, and I won't go into too much detail, these are all described in the staff report, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, there's four of them, two for alcohol sales, two for drive-throughs. Again, there's four of them, two for alcohol sales, two for drive-throughs. The grocery store alcohol sales, typical conditions that we've imposed on other grocery stores, probably most recently the Smart and Final in the Esau marketplace, limits, limits on the hours in which they can sell beer and wine, and it can only be beer and wine, it's not distilled spirits, where they can display it, and how much of it, so, not that they would, but so that the grocery store doesn't turn into a liquor store. Security cameras and so on. Again, these are all standard conditions that we've applied. This was reviewed by our police department, so we've worked with them to develop these conditions. The convenience store, again, typical conditions, the store itself can operate 24 hours a day under, in our retail zones. We are proposing though to limit alcohol sales to, to these hours. Certain number of employees need to be there. Again, limits on the, the size and location of where they can display the alcohol, security camera systems, et cetera. Now, when we met with the residents over in Ontario while we're talking about the gas station?
Back one slide. It's 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
That's right. The slide is wrong, but the condition should be right, it should be 2:00 AM. I never buy alcohol at 2:00 AM, so I didn't look at that.
I just wanted to know if it's case out late night, thirsty.
Well, it's after those late-night council meetings, you just, yeah. Thanks, Brian. So the residents in, in Ontario did have some concerns about the gas station, they were concerned about crime levels. We've checked with the police department, they, they've looked at records of call service from other similar stations. They don't feel that there, there is, that there may be a, a concern, but in reality, they don't see that kind of crime. They're also, the residents were concerned about lighting from the gas station, because they do tend to be fairly brightly lit. The applicant prepared this cross-section for us, so the gas station is almost 600 feet away. There are several industrial buildings between it and the residences, so we don't think the lighting is going to be an issue. You will probably see that the lights at the gas station are on, but in terms of really affecting the darkness of your rear yard area, we don't think that's going to be a concern, but, but we did, we heard their concern, and we looked at it, but this is our recommendation to you. The second CP is for convenience store alcohol, well, actually, I'm sorry, going on with more conditions here. And again, these are typical for other similar types of alcohol use permits that we've issued. There are two drive-through CUPs, as I mentioned, the, the drive-through pharmacy is the first one here. There are two lanes. It's fairly far away from the, the residences, you know, 800 and 600 feet from the north and from the east. We don't see noise being an issue here, and our experience is that these types of drive-throughs have far less noise, far less traffic associated with them than a typical, than a fast-food drive-through would, for instance. So we recommend approval of this. And then finally, the Starbucks drive-through, this we did spend a little bit more time on, because we are more concerned about the, the stacking and the queuing and making sure that we're not affecting traffic in the parking lot. We already had a queuing study, the one that we did for the Starbucks in the Goodman Commerce Center, same use, so we, we felt it was appropriate to use the same study, and based on the stacking requirements that came out of that study, we believe that this project will have enough stacking. It has 12 cars measured from the menu board, and then another four up to the pickup window. But based on the other two, the maximum peak that we see at a Starbucks in Esau is 12 cars, so if we provide 12 cars here, we feel that it will have sufficient stacking. So here are conditions, striping and signage, so that people know where the drive-through lane is. If you'd like, bring it back here in a year, just to see if we've received any complaints or, you know, we'll go out there and wait in the line ourselves and just make sure that it works correctly. And again, we recommend approval of this one as well. So we did send notices out, because there's alcohol involved in some of these applications, that triggers 1,000-foot noticing as opposed to 600 feet, so we did send all the notices out, 1,000 feet out. You do have comments in front of you tonight from everyone, from everyone who did comment on that, a number of those from the folks up in Ontario, as I mentioned, we did go out and meet with them. We also received comments from the public and a number of public agencies on the draft environmental impact report. Our draft responses to those are in your package tonight, we'll be happy to go through those. We have our environmental consultant, Ross Geller, who wrote both the EIR and the response to comments here, so if you have any questions on that, we can go into that. We do have a draft EIR, actually a final ER, which is ready for the city council to consider when they take up the project in December. That went through a mandatory 45-day review period that ended earlier this month. The project, as determined in the EIR, will result in significant and unavoidable impacts, which we simply can't do anything about, in air quality, greenhouse gases, and traffic, and that's all described in there. And again, Mr. Geller, as well as our technical consultant, who worked on those portions of it, are here to answer any question you may have about that. All the mitigation measures in the EIR are in your proposed conditions of approval, and those are all flagged as mitigation measure conditions. We do that so that you know that you have limited latitude to change those, or certainly to delete them, because we need to impose all the mitigation measures. So you'll, you'll see those flagged in there for that reason. Here are the agencies that we received comments from, as well as individuals. So for the, the audience tonight, the planning commission tonight is making recommendations on items which will be taken up by the city council for final approval. So our recommendation as staff to the planning commission is that you recommend that the city council approve all of these items, which are up here, all the things we just went through, from the general plan amendment to the zoning, to the development plan review, to the CUPs and the variance. So you have alternatives, you can put additional conditions, or make changes to the project, or recommend those to the council. You can recommend approval of certain applications, if there are some that you don't feel comfortable with tonight, you can continue those to a future meeting. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we would appreciate if you could, at a minimum, move the general plan forward, since that is, unlike everything else here on a calendar, that we don't, we would like to hit that December meeting. And then finally, you can recommend approval of some things and denial of others. And finally, you can recommend denial of everything if that, if you so wish. That concludes my presentation. I apologize for taking so long, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And we do have, as I mentioned, technical experts here to answer the complicated stuff. The applicant is also here, and I think he would like to make a brief presentation about his project.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. We now open up a public hearing, and applicant has small presentation?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay. Different from that current presentation, right?
Please. Fully sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Raymond Polverini, and I want to thank you for considering the various, the various and many applications in front of you. I also want to thank all those in the city that have worked on these applications. There's been a, a bunch of people that have been involved, and Ross Geller and his team at Applied Planning, as well as all the designers that have been involved, and there, there are bunches. The plans that are, that have been presented to you tonight are not the plans we started with. We and the planning staff heard from, both heard from neighbors to this project. Many have expressed a favorable view of the project, some have had issues that they want revised. Our design team has paid close attention to these comments and adopted many of the requested changes, if not all of them. We've moved and eliminated uses as a result of these comments. The environmental impacts are being mitigated to the extent that, that they can be by, you know, proper planning and what the, the code will allow. Architectural enhancements have been added to all those buildings. Now, there are some additional ones that, that Eric has mentioned, and we'll work with planning staff to come up with appropriate and desirable changes to reflect the condition of those primary access ways, so that that meets your needs, as, as they've been expressed to the commission over time, or to the staff over time. The people gathering places are now included in this plan that are significant and, I believe, unique in the city. Vehicle and pedestrian circulation are enhanced on the site. This project is probably the most pedestrian-friendly project that, that the city will have. ALUC requirements have been incorporated into the plan, and these requirements have unfortunately eliminated dining opportunities from the plan, and they have reduced leasable area on the site. The impacts on the site plan have been significant from a design perspective, and they have had negative implications from a financial perspective, but we have met all of Paul and Simon and the ALUC's requirements. As I've stated, changes were made to reflect the neighbors' concerns. We think objections, the objections that have been voiced have been addressed. However, one of the objections was with regard to the gas station. I spoke with some of the residents, they wanted it eliminated. We believe that it is in the proper location, we believe it is a benefit to the city and not a burden on the neighbors, given where it is with the distance of over, nearly 600 feet away. Archibald and Lymanite are main and main, and if there's, and it is a very appropriate location, we believe, for the gas station. Next, I want to quickly address the benefits to the city that come from this center. Sprouts Farmers Market has agreed to anchor this center. Sprouts is an amenity that is very desirable in any city, and it's providing an, an alternative grocery shopping opportunity to the city, and it's been long sought after here. Dozens of jobs will be created both during construction and during the operation of this center, and these will be, be good jobs, and it will help the residents of the City of Eastville. Traffic is improved, we'll be completing the, the adjacent rides away of Archibald to Lymanite, general plan amendment level improvement, significant, what are considered off-site improvements to this project that will benefit the city and improve the traffic at Archibald and Lymanite. The smaller industrial buildings, another benefit to the city, these smaller industrial buildings give home-based businesses an opportunity to potentially grow into something like this. You're not going to grow into a million-foot building. You're, it's a step that has not necessarily been available. The buildings have been much larger. These are at the smaller end of the scale for industrial buildings. Not all of them, but there were, one of them is just over 12,000 square feet. That's at the small end of the range, given what's going on in the county that you all know well, these, these massive buildings. And the gas station is provided on the, another gas station is provided on the west side of the city. Right now, there's one. This is a company-owned Chevron store. We think it will not be a burden, it will be a benefit to the city. Now, there's one sheet I'd like to hand out this evening, if I can, Eric, if you could give me some help here. We have had a fiscal impact analysis done that addresses estimated taxable sales from this project. It's been prepared by David Tausig Associates, it's a national public finance and urban economics consulting firm. They estimate the taxable sales from this project will exceed $22 million per year. Now, this estimate wasn't some guy sitting in a room, coming up with some numbers and saying, oh, those look good. These have independent sources for each estimate for each type of store. One percentage point of the sales tax, that's over $220,000 a year, will flow to the city's general fund. That is a significant benefit to this city. I also can't ignore that there will be an increase in the assessed value on this project of upwards of $60 million that will result in greater property taxes being paid. These are all significant benefits to the city. And the last one that I want to highlight are these public spaces. These gathering, people gathering places will facilitate even small group performances, especially the one not right next to Starbucks necessarily, but the one more internal to the project. There's a stage that will be provided that will give people an opportunity. These sorts of things help build a sense of community, and will benefit the cities in ways other than just financially. So we and our design team have worked closely with the planning, with your planning staff, and with the city engineers, designed into this development features that have been, that are important to the city, that you have expressed to your staff, that they have fed back to us, and I hope you'll recognize the significant benefits that come to the city from this project. In attendance tonight, there are representatives from Sprouts Farmers Market, from Chevron, our lead project designer is in the room, technical studies consultant is here and our land use advisor to help answer any questions that you may have, and of course, I'm available to answer any questions. So on behalf of the developers of the project, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and let you know that the collaboration between the city and our design teams have resulted in a plan that we believe warrants the commission's approval, support of your staff's recommendation of approval. So we thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any public comment cards, Phil?
Yes, our first speaker is Patrick Hanniger.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Hanniger. I'm with the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. We submitted a comment letter dated October 22nd, 2018. In our letter, we discussed several deficiencies that we found in the draft environmental impact report. In the interest of time, I won't go into and, or repeat the entirety of the 10-page comment letter. However, some of the deficiencies we discussed included, but were not limited to, land use and planning, transportation, traffic, air quality, and also noise. We stand by our comment letter and also the information they received this evening, and that the environmental impact report is flawed and should be redrafted and recirculated to account for the comments made in our letters. In the interest of time, I'll concede my time. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next comment?
Our second speaker is Mike Day.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to speak to you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Labor's Local 1184, Riverside County. We have approximately 4,800 members that work and, and live in Riverside County, and we're here in full support of this project. These, these projects are crucial for our members, and the developer's been good enough to do what we call a local hire agreement with us, local provisional agreement here for Riverside County residents. People that live in Eastville will have the first opportunities to go to work that are members of the local and other trades that would work on this project. So again, those, those benefits and, of that agreement, you know, will provide local hire, apprenticeship, health and welfare benefits, pensions and vacation, all the things that people need nowadays to support their families and, and keep these things alive for them. I mean, it's job to job. Construction jobs are temporary jobs, one right after the other. So we just finished up out at Amazon and some of the projects here in town. So again, we're here in support of the project. It's got a good local hire provision, it's a beautiful project. I mean, I've, I've done probably 300 of these over the last two or three years now, working with some of these developers, and this one is really, I think, above and beyond the call of duty as far as what they've done with the cities and what you guys have asked them to do. So that being said, again, I appreciate your time tonight, we, we're in full support of the project, we wish to get approved and moved on to the city council. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Thomas Reese.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Thomas Reese, I'm a representative of Lyona as well. And we're here to, so, we're here to support the merger, retail industrial park. We believe this project is a great opportunity for workers and the city. Not only is it a great-looking project, but it provides opportunity for men and women that construct these types of projects. For many of our members that live in and around Eastville, travel long distances to find work, especially work that provides healthcare, provides a pension, that are good quality construction jobs, sometimes even traveling outside to San Diego or Allee County, where more of those jobs are prevalent. This, this developer has committed to utilize a well-trained workforce that provides, provides these, these quality construction jobs. In turn, these workers spend, in turn, when these workers are able to work closer to homes, they end up spending more of their money here in Eastville, at the local eateries or whatnot, keeping, raising the tax base here as well. On that note, this project would also create a new tax base for the city when fully developed through property taxes, point-of-sale taxes. through property taxes, point-of-sale taxes, which would allow the city to provide more services. And a comment on the, on the gas station, as far as the passage of SB 1 and keeping that tax base generated from sales of gas tax to create transportation projects, road curbs, gutters, stuff like that, that has been successful throughout Southern California from what we have seen, would be a great quality to have within this project. Along with infrastructure, this project does provide the curb gutters, sewer, storm drains for that area that enhances the quality of life for most residents here. So we respectfully ask you that you support this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker, but for the record, comments received before 4:00 p.m. were emailed to you and are also printed on the dais.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper, and the speakers on this agenda item. Before I close public hearing on this item, is there any questions from the commission to the applicant, commissionarily?
I'll reserve my comments till later, but for questions, I have several questions that maybe staff or the applicant can answer. Before that, Chad, I need to disclose ex parte communication with the applicant. We have exchanged several emails in the past. So the first question is, if staff can address the traffic issues on Archibald and Lymanite, that would be great. What's the lanes and what the ultimate lane width is, how many lanes are Ontario expecting? And which, you know, I'm kind of confused as to which ones are signalized and so forth.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ontario has built, curb-to-curb is good for eight lanes, four lanes in each directions. However, due to our circulation muscle plan of Archibald, which is six lanes, they would drop the fourth lane northbound and fourth lane southbound, so they would merge into our six lanes once Archibald is built out at its ultimate.
What's the anticipated date for Ontario to build out or go to the ultimate?
There is a project currently on the northwest corner of the city boundary, Archibald and south side of Merrill and west of Archibald. This industrial project is being built right now, and anticipate that project to be completed in 18 months or two years.
Okay.
It's a large project.
Okay. And for this particular project, I, you know, there is a left-turn lane to the development coming down.
It's being proposed to the driveway number one. It's a left-turn lane, yes, sir.
Okay. And we don't have conditions in right now to have that lane operational after the ultimate is done by the, by the city of Ontario, right?
That's correct.
So reserve that comment for later. And then in terms of the signals on Lymanite, we're talking one signal at the east end, right?
Yes, and on the east, on the east driveway is to be shared with Walmart when Walmart comes in from the south.
Okay. All right. In terms of, I saw a couple of the comments that came in. Eric, if you can address, one of the comment has to do with EV charging, it seemed like. I think there is plenty of EV charging stations or future EV charging stations slotted for this development.
Yeah, well, there's actually two things. One is that the California Green Code requires a certain number of spaces be designated and basically plumbed, if you will, for EV charging, but doesn't require that the charging equipment be there. So they'll have to meet that, and that's part of our review of construction plans. However, in addition to that, there is a condition of approval in here that they provide 10 fully functioning EV charging stations at the first certificate of occupancy. So that goes over and above what the Green Code requires.
Great. And then my last question was, I know there's some meetings that occurred with the applicant and staff as well as the Ontario residents. So is kind of the proposal that we currently see in terms of the block wall and the wrought iron fences and the block wall, is that solution kind of what the residents wanted, or is that something that we're just proposing tonight and, you know, we haven't gotten any feedback from the residents?
Well, I was hoping some of them would be here tonight. I really can't respond for them. We think their solution is appropriate. If you look at the noise information in the EIR, there's no CEQA-related issue to require masonry wall. So we think that the solution of providing it at those intersections to keep the headlights and so on and block some of the noise is appropriate. That street is also going, that northern boundary is also going to be signed and striped for no parking, so you won't have trucks sitting there parking, idling, and so on. So we think it's an appropriate solution. I really can't answer for them. Their preference, when we talked to them back in October, was for a solid wall.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, my question is also on the wall. You mentioned that the JCS, you'd have to get permission from the JCSD in order to maintain any, the five-foot variance there. So JCSD would be the ones that would have to maintain any landscaping on that, or they just have?
No, if we put landscaping on, I'm trying to find the picture that we have of that. If we put landscaping on the north side of the wall, apologize, I don't know where that picture is. If we put landscaping on the north side of the wall, it would be this applicant's responsibility to maintain it, but they would need to get to it. So they would need JCSD's permission to take their maintenance vehicles on that access road to get to their landscaping. That's the only problem. Or if we put the wall at the property line, as we mentioned, and did the vine thing, then they wouldn't need to get over there to maintain it.
But then it's not a solid wall.
Well, no, you could put a solid wall. If you wanted to have a wall that was softened by more than vines, you'd have to move it off the property line, and then you run into the issue of getting to it to maintain that landscaping.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with the buildings six, seven, and eight. I should also mention that I did meet with the applicant at City Hall, and I am pleased to see that there was a condition put in there for the wall. But I did go to the Lennar Homes, and my concern is for our future residents there. Like Commissioner Oblea was mentioning, the height of the wall there on, from the residence side, it's only about five feet looking onto the property.
On the Lennar side?
From the Lennar side, right. And so my concern is that it's only then going to be the trees blocking their view onto the property, and it wouldn't be so much except that the east side of those buildings are not attractive at all and don't have any landscaping on them, where I see on some of the other ones, some conditions were put in to change some of the landscaping around the buildings. And so you have these future Eastville residents with all their windows, and it is the master bedrooms that overlook the wall. I went into both of those models, and those are the floor plans that are all along that whole project. And so it is the master bedrooms that are overlooking the project. And so that would be my concern is complaints later from future Eastville residents.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could respond. As I mentioned, we do have a condition here, as we note on the slide, about planting trees on that boundary at a larger size. We also have a requirement, as you recall, to take trees that they would have planted in other parts of the project to shade the parking lot. We could take those trees and put them along this boundary, plant them all closer together so you have more of a screen. So we'd be planting larger trees closer together so you'd get the screening effect sooner. And we'd be happy to look at, if you feel it's appropriate, to make changes to those sides of the building to make them more attractive. We'd be happy to look at that as well.
Anything further, Commissioner Hovey? Is that it?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Charleston?
I have a couple of questions, and I'll reserve comments till we get closer to the end, but I would concur with Commissioner Hovey because the notes that I wrote down is, it's really our jobs to help make the projects flow. You know, when a developer comes in and starts a project, he's not in tune with what's been built previously either a year ago or six months ago. But I do think that if Cinderell Homes put a block wall entirely on the north side, I think we should be doing the same thing. Now, should we do a little better than that, put the vine pockets in? I think that's a great idea. I don't want the developer to have to be burdened to figuring out how they're going to take care of landscaping 10 years from now. We just want to, you know, if the vines will grow and they get adequate water, those walls look pretty good, and there's really no need to be back there. So I wouldn't want to put that burden on them. The commercial retail buildings, it needs some enhancement, enhancements. I like the fact that Kneeta highlighted them in red. I guess my question is, is, we do this all the time. We go over this and we say, "This is what you guys want to build," and we say, "No, we'd like it to be a little more artistic. We'd like it to be a little more pleasing to the eye." So where did we lose this in the fact that it came in the packet where we were able to highlight it in red saying, "We want more done"? There just wasn't time to discuss what those changes should have been?
I think in part you're seeing the pressure of having a deadline to get to this meeting. I don't think it's anything that we can't work out, and our experience working with the architects who are working on this project is that they can turn things around pretty quickly, so I would imagine we can certainly have enhanced elevations ready for the council to look at if that's the recommendation of the planning commission.
Let's see. You guys, I would give the developer and staff kudos on the 12-car stacking. We've learned over the years that we've done it, that there are certain businesses that when they're busy, they can disrupt all the traffic everywhere else as people wait in the line, and it's really a mess. So that was a nice job doing that. I wasn't clear either where the stoplights are. How many stoplights are going to be on Archibald and Lymanite? Because normally, right-hand turn lanes make it easy to get into the project, but how simple is it for people to get out? Because if you don't have stoplights there, you're not getting out. There's way too much traffic there.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, looking at the slide, the four circles show the entrances and exits to the project. Only one of those is signalized, and that is the lower right-hand corner, and that's the signalized intersection that will then go down across Lymanite into the Walmart project. All the others are right-in, right-out only. So you cannot make a left turn out of any of those other driveways.
And is that due to negotiating with the city of Ontario, or is that us internally?
Well, part of it is us.
On Archibald as well.
On Archibald, that's us. There's a median in Archibald, and we don't want people making that left turn. There's already a signal down here at Lymanite and Archibald. So it would be, and I'm actually stepping on Joe's lines here. Joe, do you want to respond to that?
No, you actually answered it very well. Yeah, the location of those intersections, Commissioner, is too close to each other. And if you look at Archibald, the long stretch from 60 feet to 60 feet, we have the merge entrance, we have later on, we have Archibald, I'm sorry, Lymanite, and we have this one here, we've got like four or five of them in succession, yes, very close to each other. And we know that Archibald is a crazy street in the big hours in the morning and the afternoon. So we specifically asked the applicant not to put traffic signals on Archibald.
And if I could just add one more thing to that, I think we've talked, I think Mr. Lee asked a question about the left, the one left turn into the project, and that is from southbound Archibald into that first driveway. So their proposal is to have a left-turn pocket there. The stacking for that actually goes up into the city of Ontario, so we're working, we're dealing with them to get the rest of that left-turn pocket installed. The applicant may want to talk more about this himself, but they felt that was important. If we have a truck that's coming off the 60 freeway, coming down Archibald through the city of Ontario, rather than have them come down to the signal at Archibald and Lymanite, have to negotiate that, go down and make another turn and then up into the project, that the best and most efficient way for those trucks to access it would be to come down, make a left turn in the project, and then take that northern road. Realistically, if you live up in Ontario and you come and shop down at Sprouts, you will probably find at some times of the day that it's easier for you and a car to make that turn as well, but it's mostly there for the functioning of their light industrial park. But the operation of that left-turn pocket is examined in excruciating detail in the traffic analysis and discussed in the EIR. So if you want to get into the numbers, we have the folks here who can do that for you.
Okay, my last question would be, and if we put the wall all the way on the north side, it may take a little bit of pressure off the accountability of having an idling policy, of trying to enforce that. It's tough to enforce that in the summertime when it's 110 degrees out and the guy's unloading his truck or getting loaded. He's not going to want to shut his truck off to let it heat up if he's not going to be there a short time, if he's got partial load or something like that. So I was just a little bit worried about, we put policies in, but we don't always have a plan of attack of how we're going to enforce them. So that would be my question to staff. Is that up to us to enforce? I know that the applicant will put signs up to enforce it, but who's really going to be the one that's going to take care of that?
Well, the enforcement will be a combination of police and code enforcement. So if we do get complaints that there are trucks parked on that northern access road, for one thing, I think the applicant, but certainly we are going to make sure that it stays clear because that's a fire access, and it's not wide enough for cars to park or trucks and still allow fire access vehicles. So that's why it would be red-striped and signed for no parking. It's simply not wide enough to accommodate it. And then once they get into the project, as you mentioned, you know, hot day, they don't want to turn the vehicles off, they'll be going to a loading dock, and there are requirements, it's actually in state law, for the electrical hookups. So they park their truck, they plug it in, they turn the motor off, and it keeps the air conditioning and so on going. So there are requirements, just in state law, that they can't idle for more than, I think it's five minutes. So, and again, that's something that we would deal with, probably code enforcement, if we ever complain about that.
No, it's a great project. I can tell you guys put a lot of work in this, Eric. I really commend you guys. There's a lot of moving parts here, so.
I want to make a second motion on that, right, that moment right there, and I'm sorry for my Barry White voice tonight because I'm a little under the weather, but we have been working collaboratively back and forth on this project with the developers long before I even started here, eight months ago, and so there's been a huge collaboration. We've come exponential in the quality of the design of this project, and so I think this is a real great place for people to prosper and businesses to be successful in Eastville, and so I'm really excited to see where we've, where we've come from eight months ago when I started at the city of Eastville. So I appreciate the developers and their contributions to make this project a pretty spectacular place. I mean, it was a much different site plan eight months ago, so we're excited to see where it's at right now.
Great. Thank you.
I like that voice. It's soothing. Vice Chair?
Just one, I'll save my comments for later, but a question, are they going to have a hard medium there in Archibald to keep the people making that left turn into that main spine of the development?
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately it will be. A raised median along Archibald, exactly.
Okay.
Except for the openings, we approve the openings and letters.
What do you mean eventually?
Because right now, we have, the design, as it's right now, may have to defer to the Westerly property to be developed, so we may need to... So we may need to be cognizant of that. You want to put the balance of traffic northbound and southbound. There is a dairy farm on the west side of Archibald still not being developed. So there is, the spine that you look at that is a result of the, of the going back and forth because right-of-way situation. As you leave Ontario going southbound, there is a property line. It's like a very sharp corner there of the north side, Vice Chair. And then that is like a choking point. So we have to make sure that the traffic, the generalization, it fits in that area. So eventually we're going to put, in the ultimate, we're going to put the raised median on Archibald.
So by the time this project opens, that will not be done then? Or will it be done?
Well, the applicant is working right now to, number one, to make sure the power poles along their side, like about five of them will be relocated at that time. That's number one. The condition is to have that relocated when the type of opening. And what I mentioned about the west side is that we're just depending upon whoever is going to build on that west side.
Okay, because my concern is, and if it's going to eventually be done, that's, that's good. But unless you have some way to keep people from making a left turn, people are going to make a left turn. Just the 99 Cent store, we have that right in, right out, coming off of Hamner, coming out to Hamner. And people make left turns on that all the time. I walk by there all the time. It's because you have two arrows pointing right only. Doesn't mean they're going to make right only.
Understand. You meant from the blue driveway right there, right?
Right.
Yeah, right.
I come into Archibald making a left into that driveway, that's going to happen if you don't have something to stop them.
We can put up a temporary barricade there or obstacle so that people can't make a left southbound left turn in there.
From bottling up right there.
Yes, we'll take care of that. If the raised median isn't in place, we'll put something in there to prevent the left turn so that a sign isn't stopping somebody.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but sort of the utility poles, Edison poles are going to be relocated prior to the completion of the project?
Well, the project, and Eric and me are going to explain that, that the situation, we have the ultimate design.
Well, yeah, the plan is to have opening of the project coincide with having Archibald completed. Now, we're somewhat at the mercy of Edison because they moved the power poles. So the applicant has already started working with them. They've agreed to pay Edison to move the power poles. We've committed as a staff to working and pushing Edison as hard as we can. If those two don't coincide, that's a not unforeseen circumstance that we'll deal with at that time. And we've come across that on other projects. The Goodman project wanted to have Hamner widened long before it was. And there was a whole series of unfortunate events, mostly over on the Ontario side, that kept that from happening. We dealt with it by interim striping, interim improvements. So that's something that will, and there's a condition recommended in here that addresses that, that we'll work with them to come up with a way to make things work and make sure that they're safe when the project opens. And that's really only if Edison doesn't act in a timely manner and move the power poles. That's really the one limiting factor that's beyond our control.
Well, I have no questions per se, but I'll save my comments. Well, if there's no further comments on this, I'll close public hearing and start commission discussions. Commissioner Lee?
Sure. Many of the commissioners also mentioned and staff mentioned that applicant was great to work with on this project. I appreciated all the changes that the applicant made on this one. So I really do appreciate it. There are a lot of changes that occurred from the original plan. I can clearly see those. You know, there's many points in this development that I really do like. You know, especially the public area that the applicant mentioned. I think that's something that's much needed in our city and many of our developments. So I think that's, that's a great amenity. However, there are some comments I do have. And a question on the parcel 12 and parcel 15, which is the two, two buildings that are adjacent to the plaza. So is it, is it my understa, it's my understanding that it's the ALO condition that we can't put food establishment in those buildings? Is that correct?
That we can't, I'm sorry, I missed.
That we can't put restaurants in those two buildings?
No. Well, let's go through here. Okay, so shops one, single story, no skylights. Well, ALO staff, you're here. Do you recall putting conditions on the shops one building, which is next to the grocery store? Not to these.
Not to the ones that are next to the plaza.
Yeah, okay. So they could put a restaurant there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's a great news. So hopefully we'll get some good restaurants in there in those two buildings. Now, it does kind of concern me that, about, concern me the Edison poles. I think we really do need those Edison poles moved before the completion of the project. I personally understand fully how difficult it is to, you know, work with Edison. I work in the transportation industry, so I definitely do understand. But we really do need to work with Edison and make sure that those poles are moved before the opening of the project. Now for the, so you know, here's my comment on the left turn lane on the north side on Archibald. I think it's imperative that, that Ontario does go to the ultimate before we actually allow that left turn to occur from four trucks. So in the meantime, if the, if Ontario doesn't go to ultimate, I think it's unfortunate. But in the meantime, trucks do need to go to Limonite and make that turn at the south entrance. But I think it's important that, you know, if Ontario doesn't go to the ultimate, I think we'll have a bottleneck. We'll have some issues there, especially if the trucks are turning left on Archibald. That's just my opinion. I don't know if staff would agree with that or the applicant would agree with that. But I think, I would like to see a condition on that. But I'm open to discussion on that matter. So that, that's my comment. There's a few more comments on the gas station, I think. I, I'm a big proponent of having, making sure that all the buildings are adjacent to the, to the streets so that it kind of screens the parking lot. We have that in the Eastvale marketplace and I think that works great. And I think in this particular one, we do have a couple of buildings that are adjacent to Limonite. But we don't have, I think it's important that the gas station and the pumps are kind of hidden behind the building. So if we flipped the gas station building and move it towards over to Archibald, I think that kind of solves a little bit of that issue. I think we did that with the 7-Eleven gas station down in Fleisman to a certain extent. So I think that might be something that I think applicant can possibly consider doing. I don't know if they're amenable to that idea, but you know, I'll open it up for them to answer that question. And then I really like the pedestrian circulation within the development. Again, I'm not too big of a fan of meandering sidewalks, but it is what it is. We have them. I think it has to be consistent with the rest of the other developments that are out there. But so if we, you know, lessen the meandering of those sidewalks, I think that'll be, that'll be good. And then one kind of quirky thing that I would like to ask is in the future, I think, we don't want to kind of think about it at this point, but I think future, in future, I think e-scooters are coming to our community. So I think addressing some of those issues that are addressed to, that are, you know, related to e-scooters, especially e-scooter parking and so forth. So designating an area within the development to kind of address that in the future, I think would be, would be NY's idea. And I think that's all the comments that I wrote down. I wrote down a lot of notes. So I think that's all the comments currently that I have. So, yeah, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Commissioner Hovey?
I think the project looks wonderful. I do love the sidewalks. I like not being right up against the street. I do love the walkways in a shopping center. I like to be able to get from one shop to the other as a mom walking through them. And I think the gas station's in a good spot. We do need a gas station on the west side. And we do need more shops on the west side. And I'm very happy to see that we have a Sprouts coming in. But again, my concerns are for the residents on the east side. And I would like to make sure that their site is somewhat pleasing. That is my concern. They are very close to the wall. And it is only five feet on the other side, on their side. As long as the residents on the Ontario side, you met with them, so as long as they're good with what was proposed, I think that there's enough space there. And, and I think that they're a good distance away from the gas station. And they have enough distance from their homes to the center. It's the Eastvale residents that'll be on the east side that I'm most concerned about. So buildings six, seven, and eight, that side of the building is what I'm concerned about. Just the visual for the residents looking over. And like Commissioner Charleston said, with the idling, that would be very hard to police. But that was a thought too, just to put some condition in there about the idling. Because the, they are going to be backing, going up right where the two is and then backing into the dock, the truck dock. And right there is all those master bedrooms for the residents. Same with the three and then right above the triangle. So, but that would be kind of hard to police. So. But yes, no, I'm overall, I'm very happy. I've seen the changes. I wasn't a part of the project from the beginning, so I have seen all the changes and I'm very happy with the, with the project. I have no further comment.
Commissioner Charleston?
No, I really don't have comments. The only thing I want to make sure of with staff is once we start to make a motion here, just guidance on if we're going to agree on that it'll be a full wall with vine pockets, the height of the wall, you know, what are we going to do? Do we need to make sure we put the temp barricades in on Archibald and put it in as a condition? Are we going to be responsible for that as a city or do we want the project to be responsible for that until that work is done? So other than that, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
I do think this project is very nice overall. I'm in agreement with buildings six, seven, and eight having the east elevation enhanced for the view of the residents to the east and maybe having a more dense screening of trees. And maybe taller, make sure they grow a little taller than 12 feet or something, whatever it is. But something to be a buffer between those homes and the businesses. Also, I'm in favor of flipping that gas station if that's something that could happen. Having the pumps buffered from the street by the building, that would be a nice addition. And the Ontario residents to the north, I feel for them. But I can't see how a developer put a viewable wall on their back side of their houses when they knew that there was, that property was going to be developed in the future. It's in our general plan and it was there from the start. And if they didn't do their due diligence, I don't know, it wasn't going to stay open forever. There was going to be something built there. So I think they did a really nice job in trying to make it look as pleasing as possible. In fact, I don't think they're going to get as much noise as the people backing up to Archibald. That's the ones that are going to get the noise. They're going to have the headaches. I think this business park here is, it's going to be busy during the day, but not that busy where it's constant trucking going in and out. It's not a major industrial park. It's a light industrial park. So it's small trucks. It's not going to be that noisy. I back up to Citrus and I get more noise on Citrus than these people will have in this business park. So I think they did a great job in trying to make it look as nice as possible. I'm okay with the broken wall, the block wall and the mixed with steel tubing. Is that what it is, a tubing? If there's a consensus for a solid wall, I'm fine with that too. But what they have here, I think it'll look a lot nicer than just a solid block wall for them. And other than that, I think it looks really good. Yeah, just to make sure we don't get left turns coming off of Archibald and push for that left turn lane for those trucks to come in there. That'll help alleviate traffic going in that one entrance on Limonite. So other than that, I think this is a great, going to be a great addition to this corner. Really make it look nice and it'll serve a purpose that we really need in that part of Eastvale. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody said quite a lot. I'm going to keep this short.
Just one more thing.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that we get something to say that, some kind of condition that they enhance the elevations, east elevations on buildings six, seven, and eight. I don't know if we'll leave it up to finding a director to make sure that happens or I don't know how we want to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, majority of us have been here before this project started and, you know, speaking with Mr. Ross. Never beyond this diocese, but we've had our exchanges, you know. And I honestly have seen the changes that the merge project has, has made to accommodate a lot of our requests, especially with the drive-thrus and everything else. And it's a great project. I've wanted a gas station in that corner for a while, even before this project ever came aboard. So it just depends on the restaurants we bring in later. I do agree with the commissioners in regards to if Ontario doesn't go to the ultimate, we do have to keep that lifting, that left turn lane. We really have to keep an eye on that because we're, sometimes we, I mean, we see that happening by Amazon when there's no left turn lanes off the freeway or whatever. I mean, just shift changes alone will create traffic in that area. So definitely we have to look at that. You know, our city manager mentioned barricades or issues that we can mitigate with it. So we'll keep an eye on that. Flipping the gas station, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I mean, the Chevron on Limonite by the off-ramp is sort of like that where the building shields the pumps from the main street. Yeah, and actually the solid wall, I'd rather see a solid wall with the vines because that seems like it's a good middle ground. We don't have to burden the merge to get additional access anytime they want to, you know, maintain the landscape. However, with all the thoughts and sort of changes for the Ontario side, I think we need to put in the same train of thought with the Eastvale side, like Commissioner Hovey mentioned, on the east side of that wall. We really have to think about those residents. I mean, they haven't come out. But I think it's our responsibility to put just as much thought for them as the Ontario residents. So whether it be a mix of trees, I mean, that may not even be a good idea given our winds, you know, and then extra leaves blowing around. I don't know. But I think it's up for discussion. So whatever we push forward today with the help of staff, maybe you can sort of guide us on some of the conditions that we're looking for and push through the ones that need to go through tonight. Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to hear applicant if he's okay with some of the changes or conditions that we're trying to put in.
Sure.
If they can answer those. If they can answer those questions.
Open up public hearing for the applicant.
Thank you for the opportunity to address uh some of these last questions. Uh. The enhancement on building six, seven, and eight, those those buildings sit anywhere from four to six feet below the pad elevation of the homes next to it. So even though from the Sndero side, you see a five-foot wall, it could be eleven feet on the other side, on our side of the wall. In certain locations, I wanna say nine to eleven feet below. So, yes, the trees will grow up and they will exceed that, but already we have that built in, so while they're they will look and see the building, but they're going to see the top, I hate to quote a percentage, the top half, the top third, something like that of the building because of the the vertical separation between the two sites. Nonetheless, we can accommodate through either its articulation or paint or champer, some way of enhancing that, so what they look up at isn't plain. That's that can be accomplished. Uh, the north side wall, I'll leave that uh to you to decide. We believe that having a a little softer look than what is either on our east boundary or the north boundary of Sndero is better, but that's a personal preference, and I'll leave that to your capable uh judgment. With temporary barricades and working with city engineering, as well as the city of Ontario's engineering department to work out the conditions on Archibald, we know is gonna be a, again, a significant collaboration that will take place between our civil engineer, uh civil engineers, the cities, and that's plural cities, uh engineers. Um, so we will work that through. With regard to the gas station, I'd like to turn the microphone over, if if it's acceptable to the chair, to Gary Semling uh of Stantec Architects, the architect for Chevron, to discuss uh the implications, at least as we can determine them this evening, the implications of having the building abut the right of way, abut uh Archibald.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Um, again, my name's Gary Semling with Stantec Architecture. Is it possible to put the larger site plan on, just so we can kind of look and see the repercussions of uh putting the building at the back of the site or flipping the building? So um, seems like Archibald is about, just got about a twenty-foot wide landscape um buffer there. It's very, gonna be very heavily landscaped and will be probably uh softening the visual impact of our parcel. But a couple of things that um our customers like to be able to see have a visibility, access to the the fuel dispensers to see if they're available. If we put the building on the Archibald side, there's a few things that are gonna happen. One, the customer's not gonna really be able to have visibility to the fuel dispensers. Right now, um when the tanker, the fuel tanker comes in, they'll be coming north on Archibald, take a right into the center, and then they'll take another hard right, and they'll park over the tanks and unfuel on the right-hand side. The that's just the way all tanker fuel, tankers unload. And the good thing about that location is there's very little traffic circulation. Um, you know, all the circulation plans, vehicle circulation plans, that's not even in the circulation path, and I think safety is very important to keep the tanker and as few a car, few cars away from the tanker unloading as possible. Uh, with the tanker in the location that we're proposing, they can still pump gas and it's not a problem. Um, we would really have to just flip the tanks over on the other side, which I think's gonna create more conflicts. Uh, one of the other, uh, which I don't think's very safe. And then the other part that uh I was thinking of is just uh customer safety. As far as when police are doing their job and they're they're driving and they're they're uh trying to see what's going on late at night, the store's open twenty-four hours a day, the back of the store's gonna be on the street side. So that the police officer, law enforcement would have to come within the shopping center to really see what's going on within the store itself. And I think that's kind of one of the more critical issues. We feel that this layout is really optimal for the customers, for law enforcement, and for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything for the applicant, anything further? Yeah? Okay, I'll close public hearing. Um. Well, uh. I guess that that's on 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 the flipping the gas station part, it seems like it's.
I'm still for flipping the gas station building, I think. Yeah, I mean, it it works fine on the Arch, uh on on Limonite, Chevron, right? And it works fine on the Seven-Eleven, on Schleisman. I'm not sure whether what you have described occurs here, that's dif- any different than the Chevron on on Limonite or Seven-Eleven on on Schleisman.
Mister Chairman?
Vice Chair.
Uh, he brought up a good point, though, about the uh fuel tanks, filling the fuel tanks. Uh, if we do flip it, the tanks will have to be on the other side. So the gas, the trucks that come in to fill up will basically be parking in front of the drugstore or alongside the drugstore. Uh, so that could block that, kind of, could cause traffic there. So uh it might be a good idea just to leave them, leave it the way it is to prevent that type of uh problem. Cause I could see that. Um, I know when um the gas truck comes in front of uh at the Ralph's Gas Station and pulls up there, then nobody could get through anything there. And it's right next door to the Wendy's uh restaurant. And it blocks everything, so I he brought a good point about that, so maybe there might be the best thing is to have them uh unload their fuel there close to uh Archibald. Thank you.
I don't know. I I you got you got two, you got two hundred plus feet difference, um if you move, if you move the building on onto the other side. Actually, it's plu- two hundred plus feet from the drugstore, the drive-thru from the drugstore, so I think they got plenty of space.
Mister Chair, I'm I'm sorry, a couple of things. One is, we do have our police lieutenant here, if you wanna ask him about that long, the visibility issue, I think he can respond to that. Uh, the other suggestion I would make, uh if I could, is let's not try and design this here. If you really think it ought to be flipped, uh I think the applicant is willing to work with us and do some site planning and just see if it works, and we can take those options to the council and let them make the call, but I, rather than decide tonight whether it'll work or not, if if the commission is of a mind to make that recommendation, I think we can work with Mister Paul Reedy and and his architects between now and then the council meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
So is there consensus for flipping the gas station?
If they could work with, if they could try to work with them and see what happens, yeah, I'm I'm for it.
Okay, well, we'll just, like um Mister Norris mentioned, we'll
Yeah.
We'll we'll go with that path. Well, I guess we can move on to to motions. Um, Mister Norris, there's a lot of things on this. So you'll have to uh let us know how we accommodate our um request then.
We do have a list of all the recommended motions. Well, actually, we can just go to the end of the um presentation, but before we make motions, as Commissioner Charleston suggested, let's go over the um, let's go back here. Okay. Um, I did write down some discussion items that you might wanna be sure and include in a motion, so I think we've addressed the first one, which is the gas station. So your recommendation to the council is that it should be flipped and put on the Archibald alignment. The other notes that I have down here, uh Commissioner Lee recommended uh a requirement for designated scooter parking. So uh
Yeah. Can we just?
The applicant is, I think, would be fine with that, so.
Can we just include that where the where the bike condition is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so someone, if that's where you wanna go, should include that in a motion. Uh, there's the issue of the east side uh visuals, so I've heard working with them on improving the facades of those buildings, six, seven, and eight. Uh, we've mentioned a more dense planting of trees. Is there anything else that you wanted to? Well, I should say, if there's anything else you wanted to include in that, if that's where you you'd like to go, uh that should be included in a motion. Uh. There's a discussion about idling limits. There already are conditions uh in the the condition of approval that limit the idling time and require the posting of signs, the the installation of the equipment to let them plug the the trucks, and so I think that's already been covered. Um. I did hear, uh, I think consensus that the wall in the northern boundary should be solid uh with the vines planted to grow up on the other side, so that should be included, cause that's not in your package tonight. And the other issue, uh we talked about the interim operation on Archibald. And if you look in your package, the condition of approval for the development review, and this is page one hundred and sixty-seven of yours, pa- of your package. Uh, condition number forty-six uh says that they shall construct Archibald as a to its ultimate half section as a six-lane urban Ontario highway, and it goes on uh in the event that Southern California Edison has not completed the relocation of their transmission lines along the project frontage, the applicant shall post a bond in the amount sufficient to cover the cost of the improvements, so if they can't build the improvements, they give us a bond, so we're sure that they'll get done. And they submit for approval an interim striping plan to the satisfaction of the city engineer and implement the striping plan, so we would interpret striping plan to include all those things, delineators, cones, temporary barricades, whatever, to make sure the traffic flows smoothly and safely in that interim condition, so I I I think we've covered that already in the conditions, uh unless there's something else you'd like to see in there. So, uh, other than that, so the other issues of uh that should be included in a motion are the gas station, the uh visual appearance on the east side, the scooter parking, and the wall.
Think Commissioner Hovey had a question?
Yes, um, when the applicant was up discussing the east side of buildings six, seven, and eight, um, not necessarily the the facade of the building, I'm thinking more of trees along that side of the building, something to soften the view from the residents there.
So more trees.
There, even though the building is going to be the building might be lower, because their property is up higher, that is going to be their visual. And I'm trying to um protect their visual, I guess. I don't wanna hear complaints later. You see how on on the outside of every other building, there are there are trees or a planter, and on the sides of those buildings, there isn't anything.
Okay. I think we can work with them.
Limited space, yeah.
Yeah, so like the the green screens that you see in that upper left, pulling something like that along the east side of those buildings. In addition to more trees against the wall on the property line.
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Chair. Are are we in agreement on the north side wall, whether it's solid block wall throughout, or are we talking about riding fences in between?
I think it's a solid, solid wall with the vines.
Oh, yeah, I I agree with the vine pockets, but I heard some discussions on it, but are we going with the solid wall?
It doesn't matter either way.
Yeah, solid wall.
And um, I'm sorry, Joe just reminded me, there was one other comment from Commissioner Lee about prohibiting left turns from that southbound Archibald onto driveway one until the road is widened.
Yeah, on the Ontario side.
On the Ontario side, okay. So that's another uh, so somebody should include that in a motion.
How do we open up a motion like that? You got you got notes? Should we do the first, the first three?
I I would say I would suggest going one by one, the set forth in the staff report, the general plan, the zoning, and then when we get to the major plan.
Okay, and then you let us know which one fits on between four through nine.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'll open a motion for um project number PLN one-eight dash two zero zero two six uh for item number one, a general plan amendment to change land use on approximately ten point eight acres portion of the project area from light industrial to commercial retail. Oh, there's an and too, right? So and number two, can we do that? Yeah, yeah, two.
And Mister Commissioner, I I just wanna remind the um board that or the commission that the um commission is recommending.
I'm sorry, recommendation, sorry. Recommend approval of recommendation. I don't know. Sorry, recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve uh general plan amendment.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fink?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I I think we can make a motion for all of them, except for the major development review. Right?
Yeah, the additional conditions we've been discussing would all be attached to the major development review.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve or recommend to the city council approval of um change of zone, variance, tender parcel map, CUP for sale of beer and wine uh at the grocery store, CUP sale of beer and wine at the convenience store, um in the gas station, uh CUP for operation of drive-through at the drugstore, and then CUP for operation of drive-through at the coffee shop.
Mister Chairman, I'd move that we um separate the CUPs from the rest of the adder. I I I would let a little discussion before that.
Oh.
Those CUPs, please.
Okay. I'll remove the CUPs from my motion.
Okay, so we're just doing the major development review?
No, 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 change of zone, variance.
Change of variance, okay.
I second.
Ju- just so the record's clear, you're doing it.
So we're just, there's just one motion to approve the variance from parking lot landscaping and shading requirements of the zoning code.
And the zoning. And the change of zone.
And the change of zone and the tentative parcel map.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fink?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, second.
I'll make a motion to uh send to city council the uh recommendation to approve the major development review with the additions of the uh changes we discussed earlier. Uh, you have a list?
Yes, we do. So I've
Do I need to repeat them, or can, will that suffice?
Let me make sure that I've got them here, sir.
Okay.
Um, so you're gonna include a recommendation that the gas station be flipped to be located on the Archibald frontage, uh that we designate a parking area for scooters
Yes.
For the e-scooters, that uh we improve the east side visuals through a combination of the buildings, uh green screens, et cetera, on the bill, more landscaping at the building and more landscaping at the property line.
Yes.
Uh. That the wall on the northern boundary should be solid across the entire frontage, or across the entire uh northern frontage with vines planted to grow up on it. And I think and preventing, not allowing left turns from southbound Archibald into the first driveway until Archibald's improved on the Ontario side.
Yes.
Okay.
So is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fink?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Mister Chair, before we discuss the CUPs, uh I just wanna make sure that um, that it is for sure thing that the Chevron gas station will be going in and that the drugstore will be going in, and that the Starbucks will be going in and the grocery store. Are these just proposed tenants, or are they a done deal? Is it signed, sealed, and delivered?
I'll let the applicant respond to that.
Because I'm not happy with this. Please, uh, you'll need to address, because I'm not comfortable proving a CUP for something that might go in. I wanna know that is gonna go in, cause that's a CUP is, runs with the length of the land, not land, not with the business, so.
Mr. Commissioner.
What can you tell me?
One second, Mr. Commissioner, just for formalities, please open public comment.
Open public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chevron. The Sprouts and the Chevron are signed, sealed, and delivered. We're close on Starbucks, but the deal is not inked. It has been designed to their template for the building, and we are in negotiations with them nearing the end of those negotiations, but it is not a committed deal, but it is set for that use, and with the stacking study that has been done is with regard to that use. If there was to be a change, I suspect that it would come back to certainly the planning staff. Yeah, so, and just to reiterate, the lease with Starbucks is being finalized. It is much farther along and nearing the end where that with the drugstore is not. There are interested parties that have the requirement for that drive-through. That is not the, but it is not a signed deal, and we are at the earlier stages with that than we are nearing the very end with Starbucks. And Sprouts and Chevron are committed to the project, signed, sealed, and delivered.
But you don't, you can't say what drugstore it is right now?
I'll tell you that we're in negotiations with Rite Aid.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. So, they're in negotiations with Rite Aid right now, so if that falls through, we still approve a CUP for a drive-through, so would they still be able to build something else other than a drugstore with a drive-through in it? Or would only be able to build a drugstore with a drive-through in it?
As written, it is for a drugstore. I'll read from the conditions. It says, "This conditional use permit is for the operation of the drive-through pickup window at the proposed drugstore. Any change in the type of store at this location may require a review and modification of this conditional use permit as determined by the city."
Very good.
So, if it became something else, we would look at it.
All right, thank you very much. I'm satisfied.
Do we still have the subdividing portion that we have to prove we're good with that one? Okay. Okay, so then, well, we're just, were we okay with one motion on the CUPs going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move that we send to city council a recommendation to approve the CUPs for the sale of beer and wine in the grocery store, the sale of beer and wine at the gas station convenience store, the CUP for the operation of a drive-through for the drugstore, and a CUP for operations of a drive-through at the coffee shop.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fink?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Well, that's a good one.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
And for the audience, a reminder that this goes to the city council now. That'll be on December twelfth, second Wednesday in December, and there'll be notices sent out for that meeting as well.
Yep.
Okay. Moving forward to agenda item seven point two, as soon as we get a little quieter in here. So, project number seven, project number PLN one-eight dash two-zero-zero-three-four for a self-storage facility. Mr. Norris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we mentioned, this is the second item on your agenda tonight, which includes a package of applications that have in them general plan amendments, so this is something else that we would like to, if possible, move to the council in December. This is a package of applications to build a self-storage facility at the corner of Helman Avenue and Walter Street, so way over on the west side of town, and Peter Minigard, the planner on the project, is here to make a presentation. Peter?
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners and Chair, the project in front of you today is for the development of a self-storage facility, so there's a number of pieces that are going along with this. So, as Eric mentioned, there is an associated general plan amendment and zone change. The general plan amendment will be from low-density residential to commercial retail on six parcels that total four-point-one-six acres. To match that, there will be a change of zone from heavy agricultural, A-dash-two, to general commercial on the same six parcels. Further, there's a major development review proposed for the development of a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand square foot self-storage facility on four of those six parcels totaling three-point-two acres, and as well as a proposed conditional use permit for the operation of that self-storage So, to get ourselves somewhat oriented around the parcels and the acreages, so that the full six parcel project site is the area highlighted in red at the corner northwest, northeast corner, I'm sorry, of Helman Avenue and Walter Street, and that would be the area where the general plan amendment and the zone change would be occurring, would be that full red square. And then the major development review and the conditional use permit for the self-storage facility would be the area highlighted in blue, which is the four parcels. The area surrounding the project site, there's existing residential uses to the north and to the east. To the south is a future school site for the Corona Norco Unified School District. It'll be the Ronda Elementary School site, and then on the western side of Helman Avenue is vacant land. So, first, addressing the general plan amendment and change of zone. As shown on the exhibit here, the entire site would be, is proposed for rezoning from medium-density residential to a commercial retail. And then to match the general plan amendment, a change of zone from heavy agricultural to Now, addressing the corner, two parcels which are not proposed for development at this time, there's existing residences on those parcels that would become non-conforming uses. They could continue on the residential use, and then a further development could happen on that corner in the future if proposed, but there's no development proposed there at this time. The existing uses are, will remain. A couple key points associated with the general plan amendment, this would increase commercial retail land use within the city, which is one of the least represented land uses, as well as it would implement several policies related to increasing non-residential development, as well as developing local employment opportunities. So, moving on from the general plan amendment and the change of zone, we'll move to the major development review. The proposed site plan, as mentioned earlier, is a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand square feet of self-storage facility. It's split up into three buildings. As currently designed, the site would contain approximately nine-hundred storage units, a caretaker's residence on site, as well as a small office and retail space that would serve the self-storage facility. There would be a, access would be taken off of Walter Street through a driveway, and then there would also be an emergency exit provided along Helman Avenue as well, but that wouldn't be open during normal operations. That would just be an emergency access facility. So, here we have the exterior elevations of the project site as seen from Walter Street at the top, and from the west along Helman Avenue on the bottom there. And then at the top, we have the north, there's a typo, it says channel, that should say easement, that's along the existing easement behind the residential houses to the north, and then the eastern elevation, which is directly adjacent to residential units to the east of the site. Here we have perspective views of the project site from both Walter Street and from Helman We also want to highlight, there, this is a cross-section view, just showing the front portion of the project site in relation to the houses located directly to the east of the project site, just to give some concept of the height of the proposed buildings to the existing residences east of the site. This is the landscaping and screening plan for the project site, so the project proposes landscaping along both Helman and Walters. Along Helman, there's straight trees and improvements along the roadway there, and then along the front, there's landscaping provided in the small parking area in the front of the facility, as well as infiltration basin along the frontage that's landscaped. And just a point of note, there's a limited number of parking spaces along the front of the site for customers who are using the facility, but we anticipate, and based on information from the applicant, that the majority of customers using the facility would be driving directly into the facility, not using that front parking area, and would park closer to their storage unit. So, there's only a limited number of spots in the front. One of the conditions that staff is included in the conditions of, in the proposed conditions of approval is to work with a project architect to refine. We noticed when we got the rendering of the project site that the parapet at the top of the wall there just kind of stops at the corner, and so we'd like to work with them to refine that design a little bit and clean up that one design element along the top of the building. So, that's proposed in the conditions of approval. Lastly, for the conditional use permits, it's for the operation of the self-storage facility, so there's a number of conditions proposed in the conditions of approval. That would include limiting the hours of operation for the facility from seven AM to six PM daily with the office opening though earlier than eight PM. It also includes a number of security features, including security cameras to monitor the facility, as well as the installation of no parking signs on one side of the internal driveways within the facility to ensure that there's adequate fire access within the facility. As Eric mentioned earlier, the project was reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission and was deemed consistent with the Chino Airport Land Use compatibility plan during their November eighth hearing. For sequel compliance, a draft ISMD was released for public review on November ninth, with public review ending on November twenty-eighth, and the ISMD will be presented to the council for their consideration. An initial study mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project. Public notices were sent to, via first-class mail, to a hundred-and-three adjacent property owners, as well as the city of Chino. So, lastly, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend city council approval of the general plan amendment, the change of zone, the major development review, as well as the conditional use permit. That concludes staff's presentation. We'll be available to answer any questions. I know the applicant is here as well and can provide further information.
Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing here, and does the applicant have a presentation or?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Garrett Dossett. Thank you for reviewing our application tonight, and thanks to the planning staff for your time and effort over the past many months helping.
Sir, can you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
To tonight's hearing. I understand and appreciate the amount of effort and attention to detail the city's planning bodies maintain in making Eastville the beautiful city that it is, and we look forward to upholding that same standard with this development. It's our hope that we'll gain your support for a project that we've spent a tremendous amount of time reviewing over the past year, and a project that we feel will benefit your city. For the past thirty years, my family's worked in real estate development, building a range of products, and for the past twenty years, we've specifically focused on self-storage developments throughout the inland empire. We currently own and operate six facilities throughout the inland empire, and in that time, we've certainly gained a fundamental understanding of what it takes to run these facilities. If you're not aware, there are no self-storage facilities within the boundaries of Eastville. People have to travel to Chino, Harupa Valley, Ontario, or south down to Norco. We think a facility in this location would serve residents very well. Given that it borders the neighboring houses, we think self-storage is ideal here because of its low-impact nature. There's very little disturbance and categorically low traffic counts. We receive very few visitors on a daily basis, typically ten to twenty visitors a day at our existing facilities. And finally, we think repurposing this land from an underutilized agricultural zone to a commercial zone results in a higher and better use, benefiting the area overall and providing a service for residents and businesses throughout the city. We'll be available for questions, should you have any. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, our first speaker is Ken Carroll.
My name's Ken Carroll. I'm principal architect for ARI Associates, and I'm the design architect for this project. I didn't intend to get up here to speak on the project unless you had questions, but since I'm here, I would like to point out that self-storage is the lowest traffic generator of any use, including cemeteries. So, cemeteries actually get more traffic than self-storage is due. Another thing is nationally, ten percent of households will rent a self-storage unit. So, if you have a six-hundred-unit development, sixty families are going to rent a unit from you, plus you have commercial potential. So, I'm not going to belabor anything else. I'm here to answer questions if you have any. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jan Hartz.
My name is Jan Hartz. I live at seventy-four-twenty-nine Jake Street, which is two more streets over, and I don't object to what's going to happen on that corner, because anything that happens in that corner is better than what it is now, if you've been by that corner. You mentioned that the school district is, there's a potential for a school. The school's already going in. I mean, it's coming out of the ground right now. Walter, as you know, is a rural side street almost. I'm sure that the school district is going to be conditioned to improve their half, and there'll be some conditions to improve the other half, so Walter will finally get built out. Because of the nature of the school at eight o'clock in the morning and three o'clock in the afternoon, I don't know what conditions have been placed on parking, but I would really like to see the north side of Walter, excuse me, be zoned for no parking to eliminate some of the traffic. I mean, it will get, that's a small street, and there's going to be a lot of people and a lot of cars, and getting in and out of the neighborhood will be impossible at eight o'clock in the morning or three in the afternoon. So, I would like to see that a condition be put in where there would be no parking on the north side of Walter, to try to eliminate some of the problems that are going to happen. I think this is a nice project. It's certainly better than what's there. I was hoping the last little piece would go too, but we'll leave that for the future. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That was our last speaker.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission to the applicant, Commissioner Lee?
So, on the presentation, I saw that the general plan amendment.
So on the presentation, I saw that the general plan amendment is going from minimum density residential to commercial retail. I think it's LDR, right? Low-density residential?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what's in the package, so I just wanted to make sure. The other question is, so we're actually turning all of the parcels there into commercial retail for both general plan and zoning. Does the remainder parcel, which is, I'm assuming it's residential use right now, does that person know what it means to be non-conforming, and what it entails in the future? He won't be able to do anything with that property in terms of any improvements or anything like that, right?
Well, under the terms of our zoning code, first of all, there's no time limit on a non-conforming use like that, so he can continue as long as he wants to. So to answer your question, he has not contacted us that I know of to ask that kind of question. We do have a letter of authorization on file from him agreeing to this change, so he's aware of the zone change taking effect. We require that of any applicant, that they know what's happening with their property. But whether he's totally up to speed with all the details of what that means, and basically for the commission and the audience, when you become a non-conforming use, in other words, we're now a house and a residential use and a commercial zone, you can continue to operate that as a house, you can maintain the house, you can't add on to it, so you're correct. If you wanted to build a room addition at some point, we wouldn't let him do that because he'd be expanding a non-conforming use. If up to half of the building burns down, he could rebuild it. If more than half of it burns down, he could not rebuild it as a house. He'd have to replace it with a retail structure. So those are the basic rules about a non-conforming use like that.
So that was my question. I'll reserve comments for later.
Commissioner Hovey? Commissioner Charleston?
No questions.
Vice Chair Obleah?
I just have one. You sent out the letters. Did anybody respond to any of those letters?
You have a number of items of correspondence on your diocese tonight from residents in the area. I think if I could summarize them generally, there was a concern about safety for students at the school, traffic, potential criminal activity happening inside the self-storage units themselves. And we do have, as I mentioned, our police department is here to respond to any questions about criminal activity, and we can also respond to questions about traffic and so on.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have a couple of questions. This is just for my, I guess, knowledge. The storage rooms are, they're private property, right? Once they rent them, is that correct? I mean, do you actually need a warrant to go in to do a search of anything, or, I mean, do you just need the facility's permission?
I would have to check on that to see for sure.
It's, my belief is that it's under their ownership, they're paying rent for that building, so they would have the rights for that building, just like anybody else would, but I'll verify that and I can get back to the commission on that, so.
Yeah, I can't say for certain, because I don't regularly practice criminal law, but I would assume, my educated guess would be that, yes, they would need, if police wanted to inspect a storage unit, that they would need a warrant to enter that storage unit.
Now, if they break the lease where they're not paying rent anymore, and then it turns property over back to the owner of the storage unit, then they can give us permission to go in, but if they're maintaining rent...
Exactly, storage wars.
In that aspect, it's sort of, I'm going to sort of go a little bit on the side to why I'm asking that. Is a TOT tax applicable in this situation?
No. Because it's not residential.
Okay, I was just, you see why I'm sort of, there's a two-part. I mean, it's a safety issue, but then there's also the TOT, so. And other than that, I'll save my comments after the commissioners provide their comments. I'm actually curious to their comments, so. Our closed public hearing at this time, and open commission discussions. Commissioner Lee?
I guess my comment is pretty basic in terms of the comments that we received. I didn't see it in the package, but, you know, obviously, there's multiple residents that are opposing the development. So unless their concerns are addressed, I'm kind of reluctant at this point to move forward with a project that has this much opposition. Unfortunately, none of them are here, so I, you know, I don't know exactly what to make of it, but that does kind of concern me. And so, you know, and then the other comment would be, I think, you know, we just went through a whole bunch of changes, or we put a whole bunch of conditions on the merge project that are abutting the residential units. I think we should apply the same thing here. If, you know, other commissioners are better at the architectural aspect of things, I think by looking at the project itself, I think those property owners that are abutting that property, I think they'll be looking at that self-storage unit, a bland building that's there, so I think there's some concerns there as well.
Commissioner Hovey?
Yes, I share the same concerns. The residents surrounding this property purchased their homes, knowing that the parcel behind them was low-density housing, and I do agree that the parcel needs some help, some cleanup, but that school being built there is directly on Walters, and it faces Walters, and I'm concerned about changing the zoning. I do know that we need storage in Eastville. I'm just not convinced that that is the right spot for storage in Eastville. And I too am concerned about what the residents would be looking at. I did walk the street, looked at what the neighbors would be looking at, and a two-story building right behind them, and they haven't had that for all these years, would really upset me if I were living there. That's all I have.
Commissioner Charleston?
I would probably pretty much echo what the other commissioners have said, because one of the things we tell people is that if you buy a house, and don't get mad that there's a commercial building going in there, when the general plan has said a commercial building has been going to go in there since the inception of the county, or when the city took over. So if you own a house there now, and you did do your due diligence, and it said houses were going to go there, you may have bought that and said, "I'm good. They're going to put houses there." I don't know if it's going to be high-density or low-density, because a lot of times, the builders will come and want to negotiate that, but they still would have looked at it and saw houses were going to be there. So I would say that this is something that we spend a lot of time, we have a lot of developers want to take residential property and make it into commercial for financial gains, and that's not always the best thing for the city. I think this is something we need to look at seriously.
Vice Chair Obleah?
I too have concerns with it changing the general plan and zoning from light residential to, light-density residential to a commercial retail, since these people that bought homes, that's what it was zoned, and now we're trying to change it right under their feet. If we did have opposition, maybe that'd be a good thing, because it improves that corner, but with this kind of opposition to it, I don't feel good about sending a recommendation to city council to approve this. That's my concern. Thank you.
I don't know, I'm always for commercial, just the revenue side of me, because we got so many housing in Eastville, but with the storage unit, we do have to consider a lot of other things. It's not so much erecting a building from nowhere. I mean, I faced that issue living at the enclave with the condos coming up right next to me. I think they're two stories, or three maybe, but, you know, I did my research and looked upon that, but with the storage facility, I think we do need to discuss more in detail, but maybe we can point out a few topics that maybe we can either table this and have staff look into and bring it back to us. But I would like to look at some of their policies as far as storage, if they have it here, or in regards to hazardous material. There's a complaint about that from the residents, actually a couple of them, and so I think that's probably a real concern that I have is, I mean, I've, we've all seen storage units, majority of them are fairly well-run, but it just depends on what they're putting in there is a concern, so maybe, you know, even having other safety conditions that maybe we haven't seen or explored, because this is the first time I've looked into a actual storage facility project, so I'm not an expert in that. Is there any, like, points that we can direct staff into our concerns?
So, you know, Eric mentioned about the timing issue, right? So is the applicant willing to just change the designation without the major development review being approved tonight, I mean? Or does it go with the development? Is that something that we need to discuss separately?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? The whole purpose is, we can't change the general plan. We can't make a general plan amendment and change the zoning from low-density to commercial retail. We can't do that to the residents that are surrounding that area. They bought their homes with expecting to be a low-density housing in that property, not retail-commercial. It doesn't matter, you know, what they build there, we can't change, we can't amend the general plan right under, right under their feet to do that. So I had to make a motion to deny the general plan amendment from low-density residential to commercial retail, and to deny the change of zoning from heavy agricultural to general commercial on the six parcels.
Actually, before we move with that one, Commissioner Lee did have a question, so once we get that answered, we technically have a motion, so we're going to wait for a second, but there was a first question from Commissioner Lee.
Right, so is that...
Can we do that? If he's made a motion, do we need to...
Well, he asked the question first.
He had the question first, but what was the question? Oh, basically, you know, because Eric mentioned about the timing of the general plan amendment, is the applicant willing to just change the general plan amendment first, or at least address the general plan amendment issue first, without the major development review? Because for the major development review, I think, because of all these comments that we received recently, I think it's prudent for the commission. I think everybody's in agreement that they need to go back to the community and ask them, and do some kind of community outreach with this, so.
Well, I mean, if the commissioner, if the commission determines or decides not to recommend, you know, approval of the major plan amendment to the city council, then that kind of moots the major plan review, because, you know, you're not moving forward with the...
Agreed. Agreed, that's why, okay.
Well, then there's...
Yeah, and as Eric pointed out, if you make a motion and recommend denial of the general plan amendment and the change of zone, that recommendation of denial will move to the city council.
Okay, so then we currently have a motion for denial.
You currently have a motion on...
Is there a second? Your call?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Vice Chair Obleah? Chair Fang?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Yeah, no, my thought was because we could continue it. I think continuation will...
All righty, moving on to commission business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we're still trying to figure out the next step here. Because there's still the two other kind of issues which, in short, have been mooted by the...
I thought the motion was to deny the entire thing across the board, right?
I think we heard a motion on the general plan amendment and the zone change, and your recommendation to the council there is to deny those two items. Now, if they, if those don't occur, if the council agrees with that, then yes, the whole discussion, the rest of it is moot, because they can't do it. Now, if this goes to council in December, and they decide, in their judgment, to approve those two items, then we're back to considering the final, the major development review and the use permit, but they wouldn't have a recommendation from you on those. So I think the prudent move would be to either make a motion to continue those two items until, or make a motion to approve or deny, or either make a motion to continue until the council has made a determination, or make a motion to deny.
Vice Chair?
Yes, so if...
One second.
I don't want to continue it. Continuing means that we want to further discuss it. We want to deny the general plan amendment.
Yeah. One, what would be, staff's recommendation would be to motion to continue the major development review and conditional use permit until the commission's meeting on the 19th, depending on the action of the city council. If the city council determines to approve the general plan review and change of zone, then the review, the major development review and conditional use permit will come back to the commission at that time.
But, well, but if we continue it, then does city council know what our vote is?
On, they, you would not be making a recommendation on the major development review or conditional use permit, so you wouldn't be making a recommendation to approve or deny one way or the other. It would just be a continuation.
For the general plan.
If you don't continue it, if you don't continue it, the city council will determine the third and fourth thing, it won't come back to you.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, because it's going to happen anyways. It's going to go to the city council as a package, so if they approve the general plan amendment and the zoning change, they're going to also approve the, that's their job to approve.
No, 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 no. Not if you haven't made a recommendation.
Not if you have not made a recommendation.
Because we're not, we're not going to make, we're only going to send a recommendation for those from us anyways. They have to find, do the final approval.
But if you haven't, because a recommendation, because the planning commission needs to make a recommendation on, would need to make a recommendation on the major development review or the conditional use permit before the city council considers it, if the commission doesn't make a recommendation here today, then the city council will not consider those items.
So if they approve the general plan amendment and the zoning, they'll throw it back to us for the major development review and the safety?
Yes, if you continue it, if you yay or nay it, they will not bring it back to you.
So I want to clear this up. Members of the commission, we have, we have folks here that don't want the general plan amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so therefore, without changing that, number three and four for the major development review and the conditional use permit is moot, right? So...
No, that's what we're trying to tell you.
So you're going to, so, well, but...
So it...
Either deny it or continue it.
It does, well...
That's if we deny it.
I would recommend that you continue it, so that if the council changes your opinion on, or your recommendation on denial, that you have a chance to come back and provide input on the major development.
Can we start on square one here? Okay, so we, so we have, okay, can we, so no on general plan amendment is what you're saying, Commissioner?
Yeah, so you're saying that then if... Yeah, so you're saying that then if the city council comes back and says yes, then we will not be able to review the plans?
If you continue, if you continue it, you will be able to review.
If we deny it.
If you recommend to deny, then at that point, the, the city, it's, it's in the city council's hands and they would be able to either not follow your recommendation of denial and potentially approve it.
They will see that we have denied the general plan change.
They would see, yes, they would see that and they would, yes.
So they will see, they will see that, well, uh, our staff's recommendation is that you continue items three and four on, on the, uh, or motions three and four so that you have an opportunity for it to come back to you in case.
And deny one and two.
And deny, well, you've already, you've already denied one and two.
Question, Brian, but if we do that, then um, council won't be able to see the major development.
Correct.
So they won't, they will only see the general plan amendment?
Correct.
Which means they'll only look at that as a commercial retail.
Well, our, our practices to include.
Without the storage unit included.
They'll know about this. We'll include the entire planning commission package.
And all the letters from the resident.
They'll have all the letters, they'll have your entire package attached to theirs.
Are we allowed to speak at city council?
Yes.
Yeah, you can speak. I, I just want to make it clear on the, I know what staff is recommending. I just want to make sure that the commission is clear on what we're deciding because we did approve a denial, so it's, I mean. Is there a change of?
So, so, so you can deny motions three and four and, and you will not have an opportunity to ever see this project again if council changes something. If, if, if you continue it, you have an opportunity to see it again. If council reverses your denial of motions one and two.
Right, if council agrees with your recommendation and denies the general plan amendment, zone change, it'll be on your agenda for December nineteenth. You can just end the discussion because it'll be moot at that point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so it's.
But if they approve the general plan amendment and zone change, then it comes back to you. They'll have given you that decision and then you can continue your discussion about the design, all the other issues that have come up here.
Okay, so one and two is done. We're just deciding on three and four.
Correct.
Correct. Which is a little weird because then they'll have to.
Oh, yeah, make a motion to continue it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
I'll second.
And that's to continue it to your next regular meeting in December. Thank you.
Uh, or could we make it till after the city council makes a decision on the general plan amendment?
They'll be scheduled to hear this on the twelfth, so this will be the week after.
And you never know, so.
Um, we can move it into January if you'd like.
Or if it's after the ci-.
If, I mean, if the council doesn't make a decision on, on the twelfth or if they continue it, then then you can continue yours, so. By sending it to the nineteenth, this makes sure that it comes back as soon as possible.
Just want to put that proviso in there too. So we don't get it back and that's what happened.
Aye.
Roll call?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, I'm gonna need to talk to staff about, just clear my head after this about that, so. Um, okay, moving on to commission business. Um, anything from uh, the commissions? Commissioners, anything? No? Commissioner Lee?
Happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Commissioner Hovey?
Happy Thanksgiving.
No, everything good? Let's see, there's no, no staff reports?
Uh, no, I believe in the council package, which will go out shortly. Uh, you'll have the latest uh, monthly status update, so invite you to take a look at that. A lot of stuff happening out there, so. A lot of projects moving through the pipeline. And just to extend our appreciation to you guys for working with us on all this stuff. We know it's a, a big package and uh, yeah, just a shout out as well to my staff, Becky, or Peter, Kanika, all the other folks who uh, actually did all the work on this stuff, uh, spent a lot of time spent and appreciate their efforts on that. And happy Thanksgiving.
I skipped you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I skipped Vice Chair Oblea.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we, it's, I, I, I thought I did.
Business?
No, for comment. Commissioner comments. Well, anyways, uh, aren't we at commissioners' comments right now?
We, we will be, sure.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, you go first, Vice.
No.
No?
I'll wait.
I'd like to get out of here.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go first. Uh, Public Works needs to take another look at that ninety-nine cent store driveway in and out because it's, they're really uh, people making uh, dangerous turns in and out of that uh, parking lot all the time, so um, making uh, left turns from uh, northbound Hamner right into uh, the west entrance of the ninety-nine cent store and stuff like that, so I think we need to do something about that. And um, um, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and see you at the Christmas party or holiday party.
When is that? November thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay.
What time?
Seven or six?
Six.
Six.
Six, I thought seven last time and I was an hour late the last one.
Six to nine.
Cool. Communications, Commissioner Lee?
Well, I think I said happy Thanksgiving. Um, but I, one, one comment though, um, you know, kudos to staff on the merge project. Um, you know, it's completely transformed from the original plan um, that I had a chance to see, so yeah, good job.
Commissioner Hovey? Nothing? Yes? No? Commissioner Charleston?
Uh, I have a question for Eric. So, uh, I know code enforcement has, you know, really up their game. We've got more people you know, working on things around the city, but when I was out driving around this afternoon, when I, I went down uh, to campus and then went all the way around to Hellman and looked at, you know, Walter Street, and we still have some houses that are at the corner of Archibald and Chandler that really look rough. I mean, they look like junkyards for God's sake, so I thought we had jurisdiction where we could get some of that calmed down because we're hammering residents about having grass in the front yard, but yet we can have a guy let his whole front yard look like a junkyard? I don't get that. What, what's our authority there as far as what can code enforcement do to get a handle on that? It's been like that for a lot of years now, so why haven't we made a move on it, I guess is my question.
Yeah, I mean, there, there certainly are options um, to, for code enforcement to um, require the cleanup of that under general nuisance is, it doesn't look, you know, it doesn't conform to the neighborhood uh, as well as potential fire hazard and um, things like that. So I think that's something that we'll need to alert code enforcement to and have them.
I mean, it's easy enough identified. When you drive by, if there's broken down equipment, you know, it's just, I can't imagine we can't, it doesn't have to be perfect, but it could be a lot better than it is.
Well, we'll report that back to code enforcement and, and see if they can come here to your next meeting and, and tell you about that. I know they have, you know, they have more staff, but we have limited staff and they're reacting to direction from council in terms of what their priorities are. I don't know if they have anything working on those properties right now. They may already have some action going, but uh, we'll share that concern with them and we'll ask them to come back here at your next meeting and just talk to you about what they're doing in, in Chandler and elsewhere.
Yeah. Code enforcement also, at that seven eleven on, on the corner there, it's been over a year.
The one on Archibald and Schleisman?
The one on Hamner and.
Oh, that one?
Riverboat.
Yeah.
They still don't have the, the lights in the back, the safety lights are still on. There's still wires hanging out of the building. It's been over a year. And we've talked about that we were gonna have to actually get legal involved to try to, you know, get them to get off the dime. If you talk to the residents there, or I'm sorry, the, if you talk to the, the tenants there, some of the tenants will tell you they do not get very good support from the owner. And that when they ask for things to be corrected or repaired, nothing gets done. This is the same owner that has rebuked most of the things we've asked him to do, so. I, I'm thinking at one point, we're gonna have to step our game up and decide because it was considered a blight two years ago and we put a lot of effort in trying to get it straightened out in the front sidewalk and parking. And it's improved a little bit, but some of the things they were asked to do, they just haven't responded. So I, I would like us to address that too, if we could, please, Eric.
I'll do that. Uh, we actually have a, a weekly Monday morning call with code enforcement and planning and the city attorney, so I'll, I'll raise that in our next call.
Thank you.
Um, actually, just, just to add to Commissioner Charleston's, I mean, I, I do frequent that plaza quite often and it's just sometimes it gets worse. I mean, they, they got abandoned cars sometimes we, that I've seen there and just you know, at nights, there's weird people walking around, you know, and just, they're just loitering there. I mean, I, I know there's only things that we can do as far as the city, but you know, maybe if we put more eyes and attention, it'll scatter folks a little bit from there.
You've got police right here, so they're hearing your concerns.
I know, I saw it. He was like, I know, I get all happy and. Well, um, thank you, staff, uh, for everything. Um, i- it's been a great year, uh, and it's a, you know, time for Thanksgiving. And so hopefully we can see past uh, our differences out there and uh, be thankful for what we have and, you know, what we can give others, so. God bless everybody here and uh, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Uh, meeting adjourned at uh, ooh, nine oh four?